Check one two. Live stream test one two. Live stream test one two three. Live stream test one two three. Live stream test one two three. Check one two. Check one two. Check one two. Check one two. Check one two.
quite frankly, at any point during their contract.
Good evening. I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:06 on August 10, 2021. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We had a little technical difficulty that we were working on. As we begin our meeting tonight, I hope that all of us can be good role models for what public meetings should be. I hope that everyone can be respectful of opinions that may differ from our own. I hope that we can all listen to each other, and I hope that we can allow all voices to be heard. We are here for the safety and well-being of our students and our staff. Thank you. As you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's contract. The superintendent's contract is brought before us for vote. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding this proposed superintendent's contract?
I'll make a motion that we approve superintendent's contract as presented.
A second.
Any discussion?
I don't normally read a statement, but I prefer to do that this evening because I want to make sure that I am clear in what I'm saying. I'm very disappointed and dismayed at the way the renewing of the superintendent's contract has transpired. The fact that during such turbulent times, with so many serious decisions on the board's decisions on the board's agenda, I feel that requesting an early extension of his contract when it is not set to expire until 2023 is inappropriate. This is a very lucrative contract, and at a time when so many people are hurting, I think it's fiscally irresponsible to approve a new contract at this time. We've spent an inordinate amount of time, hours, as a board discussing this, when we could have been making more timely decisions about issues such as classroom safety, transgender rights, race and equity issues, and the implementing of our strategic plan. A new contract, I don't feel, was in our students' best interest, which is what we say is what we're here to support. I'm also concerned that our chairperson, Marty Graham, has taken it upon herself to have discussions regarding the contract without board input. I feel this decision was a clear deviation from her responsibility as chair to represent the board. I hope when the public goes to vote this November, they consider the way that their hard-earned tax dollars have been used. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to say a couple of things about this. So for me, this comes down to two things, democracy and accountability. And on the democracy side, alluding to what Sue had alluded to, the process that we followed on this was not right. It was improper. In my opinion, I think it probably bordered unethical. Parts of the process were done secretly, without board knowledge or input. There's been multiple attempts, I think, to sneak elements of the contract by the board and to mislead the board. After this, negotiations happened without the board's approval or input between the chair and the superintendent. When the majority of the board agreed a few weeks ago to further discussion, that discussion was scheduled for the meeting last week, when we knew it was going to end up happening at midnight, and where nobody had the time or the stomach for whatever we would have to do from a negotiation point of view. Whether it's by accident or on purpose, the chair, I think, has consistently acted in a way that furthers the interest of the superintendent rather than looking out for the interest of the school board or of MCPS. And I'm not making a comment on whether having Dr. Myers our superintendent is that. I'm just saying as far as what's the terms of the contract. So I don't think that this contract reflects the will of the board when we talk about the will of the board, because we've never gone through a negotiation on it. We've never gone through the process to properly get something before us to vote on or to present that is, that reflects what the board's will is. And, you know, there's, there's going to be excuses that this thing's taking too long and blah, blah, blah. I don't think that's a defense at all. It's, it's those actions that I talked about earlier that really extended this whole process when it shouldn't have been. And we've never negotiated on this. No one has ever asked me what I am willing to give up or not give up in the very, on all six or seven items in this contract that are going to change if we vote it through. So I think, for me, it's not a reflection necessarily of the superintendent, but I think because of the process, I think we vote no tonight on this. I'm going to be voting no tonight. And then I think we allow a proper process to go forward that gets the will of the board to go forward. I'm really disappointed with the way the process went. And the other thing I want to talk about is accountability. And I want to say that I think that these superintendent contracts are important. I mean, hopefully, we never have to use them. Hopefully, we continue to have a good relationship with our superintendent. But, you know, in Virginia, the authority for the superintendent comes from the seven of us, but, you know, four of us have to agree, and it's hard. And as everybody knows, you know, it's like steering the Titanic with a little tiny three-foot rudder, right? And so a lot of this does fall on the superintendent being receptive to input and criticism and things like that. And, you know, I think the, the current superintendent contract and most superintendent contracts all over the state do have a severance clause, and that clause is there to kind of protect them from, you know, political whims of the board. But it's also, I think, if it gets too long, it's a deterrent that, that makes it hard for future boards to deal with, to deal with issues that they may be having with, with the direction that the district is going in. So that's where the accountability comes in. And I think that, you know, with the length of the contract and, and severance, these things can deter accountability, and I think that we need to be careful about what it is that we are going to agree to in that department. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Anyone else?
So, um...
Thank you.
Okay. So this has been, as many of you have been observing, a long, drawn-out process, which is not the norm when we are looking at what we're going to do as far as the superintendent's contract. It is normal for the superintendent, a superintendent anywhere in the state, to ask for an extension, quite frankly, at any point during their contract. So that's just something that happens. It happens at a time at the end of the year, where there are a couple of different things that are going on related to the superintendent. And unfortunately, this year, processes got kind of mixed up and have created this delay. So I just want to say that this is not a reflection of the superintendent. It's a reflection, quite frankly, of dysfunction of this board. And that is sad, because it is such an easy process when handled the right way. I've gone through this many times, and we could have done better. Or should I say, some should have done better. But I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to say something, too. Even though the procedure might have gotten a little twisted and maybe not done the way that it might have been in the past, maybe the way it shouldn't have been, bottom line is, I think our superintendent does a fantastic job. Most of our schools couldn't have gotten through what they got through this past year if it hadn't have been for his and his team's excellent leadership, and I commend him for that. And this, as in many other things, our board differs in their views. And as far as the late-night meetings, we've had many. And there's been many times when I've said, hey, we shouldn't be doing this at a late hour, but it was voted to move forward. Well, I can't think of anything that's just as is or not more so important than making sure we ensure the, the business of the leader of our district. So with that being said, and at the last meeting, I'm not sure who made the comment about the negotiations I asked, and everybody was there. Okay, let's, let's negotiate. I understand it was late, but again, we've done and taken care of much board processes and business at a late hour. So this is something else that might have needed to be done at a late hour. And it's hard, but it's our job as a board to do it. So I'm in support of this contract.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ms. Franklin.
Yep. Are you, no?
You're on.
You're not on.
I'm just going to use this one.
Okay.
I'm not going to beat a dead horse, and I'm not going to stay up here and continue talking and repeating things that you have heard from my fellow board members. I do just want to say that I want to thank Ms. Franklin for bringing forth the fact that items being discussed tonight by the board on the superintendent's contract is absolutely no reflection of our superintendent. It is, again, some dysfunctioning going on with the board that we need and will continue to work on. I totally respect the opinion and the thoughts of my fellow board members. And with that being said, several of the closed sessions that we had, I did not move forward on a vote, which is partly probably my fault, because I wanted to have further discussion, because I even made the statement during the closed session that I didn't feel comfortable voting unless my fellow board members felt comfortable voting on this contract. So I feel that there has been ample time for negotiations, and we all pretty much knew where we stood, and we tried to compromise. And, yeah, we had some late nights, but like Ms. Bond appointed to, we've made several decisions late, and this is a very important one. This is one that we've been toying with for three to four months. And out of respect to Dr. Meyer, even though he technically doesn't have to ask for an extension on his contract now, he has. And I feel like at this point, we owe him the respect of voting on that this evening. And I just want to let everyone know that I, as well, am in support of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
I would like to make probably similar comments with my fellow board members. It definitely reflects our dysfunctionality. The process could have been different. What could have been, should have been, shouldn't hold the superintendent in the process and under his leadership. The division has accomplished so many things. I have pages of lists, if anybody is interested to see later on. And division is respected and admired and looked up to so many other divisions in the Commonwealth because of his leadership and where we are, how we handle the COVID crisis, and how many programs we have, and how well we are doing in the Commonwealth. So definitely, the contract time was usual, June 30th. You know, any time superintendent can bring, whether it's a salary increase, contract extension, or negotiation. So there was nothing wrong when it is presented this year. The process could improve. We can all improve. We all make mistakes, but it is not any reflection to him and what we accomplished at his MCPS. I am in support of his contract.
Thank you. Board, I've heard your concerns about the process. I'm reaching out to VSBA and our legal counsel to determine a written procedure for how contract negotiations should be handled. I will be bringing this information to the board for you to review at a later date. At this point, does anyone else have anything they want to discuss? Okay. Roll call, please. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Cass?
Big no.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I like to say something real quick, folks, if you don't mind. First of all, thank you for, as a board, voting for the extension of the contract. You know, I'm excited to continue to be a part of MCPS for the next four years. Montgomery County, as all of you know, here's a great place to live, and MCPS is even a better place to work. We have an amazing team. And when I say team, it means everyone. Everyone who's involved in the education of our children every single day, and they care deeply about our kids. I'm very proud of our accomplishments over the past five years, and, you know, I look forward to continuing this tradition of success in our county. There are several reasons I'm excited about the future of our school division, and most are listed within our newly adopted strategic plan. The implementation of the strategic plan will place an emphasis on focus and focus on instruction, teaching students in poverty, the mental health needs of our students, the importance of equity for all, and continuing to move forward with improving our division facilities. As you know, education is constantly changing. The key to success in an ever-changing environment is focusing on the needs of our students. I look forward to continuing to put the needs of our students first. That's first, the needs of our students, as we move forward together over the next four years. So, thank you, Board.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda are consent items. We have four out-of-state field trips presented as consent items tonight. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, the field trips are considered approved on consent. Our next item on the agenda is public address. At this time, in each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside 30 minutes, up to 30 minutes, for residents, students, and employees to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. We have a number of speakers signed up tonight. I want to quickly go over board policy related to public address. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when time is up. After 30 total minutes, the board has the option to vote to extend public address for an additional 30 minutes. After one hour, public address will continue after closed session and prior to the close of the meeting. I will call up several names in order and ask that you begin to line up to get ready to speak so that we can hear as many speakers as possible. Please be respectful and keep your applause limited, as that takes time away from the speakers. This first speaker I have is Robin Sanborn, and then Erica Grafsky.
My name is Robin Sanborn. I'm from Blacksburg. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Unfortunately, many parents cannot be here since most of the school has sent back-to-school events tonight. I'm here to encourage you to pass the transgender policy written by the Equity Committee. Unfortunately, the policy was edited between last week and this week to state parent and student as opposed to parent and/or student. Not every trans student is able to come out to their parents, unfortunately. Some come from unsupportive homes, and these students are at the greatest risk. I hope you'll approve the policy presented last week. I was inspired by the young people who came out to speak last week. They did a fantastic job, but they shouldn't have to. Our job as adults is to protect them, and they shouldn't have to put themselves in the crosshairs of a culture war just to be treated humanely at school. Some have questioned whether this policy is really needed. It is. I know multiple families in MCPS with transgender children who've struggled with their school's administration. In one case, a child came out this summer. The child's parents met with their school administration two weeks ago to discuss the name change and bathroom use. As of this morning, the child's name still hadn't been changed in power school. They emailed yesterday, were told IT had to make the change. It took, then it may take a couple of days, but hopefully would be done before the start of school. They started this process three weeks before school started. Fortunately, this morning, after a flurry of phone calls and emails, they were able to get it situated, but it was a rigmarole they should not have had to go through. Coming out as transgender is difficult for our children in so many ways. Having a clear policy so students and their families know what to expect is the right thing to do. That said, it's also a legal requirement. The alternate policy proposed does not meet the guidelines laid out by the Commonwealth and will leave the school district exposed to lawsuits from transgender students and their families. As a parent and as taxpayer, that's certainly something I want to avoid. Based on last week's discussion, it looks like you're leaning towards adopting the Equity Committee's policy, and I want to thank you for doing the right thing for our students. Finally, I'm sure you've seen the pictures on social media of classrooms within VHS showing teachers' pronouns and LGBTQ flags. I want to thank those teachers. These little touches of inclusivity are important for our LGBTQ students. It shows that they're seen, appreciated, and supported. It's not indoctrinating anyone. It's simply making everyone feel safe and included. The Equity Committee put a great deal of time and attention into crafting their policy, and I urge you to pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanborn, I'm just seeing your name. Reminded me that there was one more thing I wanted to make sure I mentioned. When you, when it's your turn to speak, just state your name and your location. You no longer have to give your exact address. Okay, so we have Erica Grafsky, which I believe is coming in via phone. And then after that, it will be Anna Vigianay. Hi.
Hello?
Hi. Your three minutes have started. Go ahead and state your name and your location, and then you can begin.
This is Jimmy. Thank you. Is it time for me to start?
Yes, please. Your name is...
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to address the school board as they consider issues related to the LGBTQ students. To introduce myself, I have a PhD in sociology with a focus on issues of adolescence and health. A ten-year resident of Blacksburg, I have children, grandchildren, in the Montgomery County school system. I'm pleased to be able to speak in support of the policy document developed by the Equity Committee. This policy addresses key aspects of treatment of LGBTQ students and does it in a broad and inclusive manner. Now, the Centers for Disease Control, for example, offers a wealth of resources on the topic, but when national entities such as the CDC consider policy guidance, the final analysis, they look to the local areas to articulate such policies in ways that meet their needs. That is what the Equity Committee has done. The statement focuses on key issues, bathroom access, locker rooms, use of name and records, and provides practical guidance that stays away from peripheral issues. Too often, policy memos endorse broad goals such as all students serving to be treated fairly, but do not go the next step to say what is important or how goals can be achieved. The Equity Committee document takes that next step, important step. As part of providing practical guidance, the committee has been able to identify who is to be included, policymakers, the teachers, the administrators, the parents, and of course, the involved students. Adolescence is a challenging time for most young people, and this policy takes concrete steps to ensure that the LGBTQ students face their needs, and their needs are met in an inclusive manner. The relevant parties are identified, and they are appropriately included. The policy supports the specific needs of LGBTQ students, but it also operationalizes the general values of equity and inclusiveness as important values for all students. In conclusion, while this document is specifically aimed at addressing the needs of LGBT community, it does so in the context of providing a safe and inclusive environment for all students. To introduce myself, I have a PhD in sociology with a focus on adolescence and health.
The person on the phone is watching the meeting, and what you're hearing is the delay between the live audio and the YouTube audio. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
If there are some goals we have for all students where there are specific challenges for the LGBTQ community, this is a valuable tool for schools, parents, and students. I endorse their statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? Anna Vigianay?
Hi. My name is Anna Vigianay, and I live in Blacksburg. I'm here to urge you to approve the transgender policy that was written by the Equity Committee as it was presented last week, not the modified policy that's before you today. I support this Equity Committee policy for two reasons. It is the right thing to do for our students, and it is also the only acceptable choice under our state law. Why is this the right thing to do for our students? I personally don't know what it's like to be transgender, and I don't know what it's like to be a teacher of transgender children. But I heard the testimony addressed to you last week from MCPS teachers and students. Teachers made it clear how important a supportive school environment can be to the safety and well-being of transgender students. And students made it clear that the current policy has not been able to ensure the supportive environment that they need. We need a policy that clearly states the rights of transgender students and the procedures MCPS will follow to protect those rights. And the policy from the Equity Committee does that job. And I want to talk about a few specifics. The Equity Committee policy specifies that students have the right to be called by the name and pronouns that match their gender identity. This is common sense and straightforward. It's a matter of respect. Anyone would feel fundamentally disrespected if they were repeatedly referred to by the wrong pronouns. This policy also specifies that students may use bathrooms that correspond to their gender identity. This is also common sense and straightforward. I know that some people like to say that girls should use girls' bathrooms and boys should use boys' bathrooms. This is exactly what this policy allows. It allows transgender girls to use girls' bathrooms and transgender boys to use boys' bathrooms. Some people argue that it will be a danger to others if transgender students are allowed to use bathrooms that match their gender identity, but there is no danger at all. Researchers have shown that there is no link between inclusive bathroom policies and danger to others. In fact, research suggests that when transgender children are allowed to use bathrooms that match their identity, they are less likely to experience physical harm. The new transgender policy from the Equity Committee will make our students more safe, not less safe. Before concluding, I just want to touch on the other reason that I support approving this policy. The new state law requires school boards to adopt policies that provide specific protections for transgender students, and the policy from the Equity Committee satisfies the requirements of that law. But if you do not approve this policy, then the division will be in violation of state law and will be opened up to the possibility of lawsuits and a corresponding loss of taxpayer money.
Thank you. Your time is up. Our next person is Wendy Baldwin, and I believe she is on the phone. Our next person is Wendy Baldwin and I believe she is on the phone as well. And then after that, it's Zoe Crish. Not Erica Grafsky?
So I think we just got our whole lines a little mixed up. Doug will release the next person, we'll ask them for their name and that'll help us straighten that out.
That'll help us.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much. And then Zoe Crish, if you could be ready next. Do we have that person on the line?
Let's see.
Hello, who do we have on the line? Hello? Is this Ms. Grafsky? Nobody responding. Ms. Crish, if you want to go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Zoe Crish. I am a student at Blacksburg High School. I would like to speak today supporting the Equity Committee's proposed policy for transgender students. For reference, I am a non-binary student, I use they/she pronouns. I have not been out since school has been in person, so I have not personally experienced harassment at the hands of other students or teachers, but I have friends who have been harassed both verbally and physically, assaulted and downright ignored by both students and members of the faculty. Last week, at last week's meeting, there were, there was someone who spoke and said that there were seventeen transgender students in the entirety of MCPS schools. I know for a fact that there are seventeen transgender students in my grade in my school alone, and I said that last week too. And my reason, my thinking is that perhaps the reason that you only know of seventeen is because those students are either afraid to go to the administration or the administration does nothing about those students. It is very important that in education, that queer and transgender students are represented. There is such a stigma around being LGBTQ that I was scared for a very long time to come out to my incredibly supportive mother, who I knew was a supporter of the LGBTQ community. I knew that she supported me and yet because of the stigma around it, I was afraid to tell her. And I would like to also address that the policies, the change of policy from students and/or parents to students and parents, I believe that you should remain, remain with the Equity Policy's proposed, students and/or parents, because there are a lot of students who are unable to come out to their parents. And if, and if getting a more comfortable, more comfortable place with your identity at school requires being outed to your parents, a lot of students are unable to do that for fear of being harmed by their parents or harming themselves because somebody told their parents. It is these students in particular that need to be protected and it is important that the board considers that when thinking about this change to the wording. I would like to end by repeating the words of my friend that she said at last week's meeting when people were yelling at us and calling us pedophiles. I have never been as scared to be queer as I was today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, the next person is Eden Brock and then...
I'm so sorry, Ms. Graham. We have Erica Grafsky on the line properly, if it's okay with the board.
Ms. Grafsky, if you want to go ahead and state your name and your location, then you can start.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Erica Grafsky and I'm in Blacksburg, Virginia. I am an associate professor of human development and family science at Virginia Tech and a parent of three MCPS students. I do want to apologize that my words will mimic some of the words that have come before me, which I do appreciate. I would like to voice my support for the MCPS Equity Committee policy as written previous to the revision regarding trans and gender expansive students. As an MCPS parent with academic expertise in sexual orientation and gender identity diversity, I strongly support the adoption of this policy. It is in line with Virginia Department of Education guidance and should be adopted to ensure a safe school environment so that our youth can thrive in MCPS schools. I would first like to make the point that gender diversity is a typical part of human development and we should accept and affirm that our students are coming into their own understandings of theirselves, beginning before elementary. Exploration and commitment to varying aspects of identity are shaped by the people and the environments that are around them and our schools should be a positive influence on the development, excuse me, of our students. Further, there are numerous reputable scientific studies that demonstrate the need to specifically consider the safety of trans and gender expansive students. A recent study found that transgender youth who belonged, felt like they belonged at school were about half as likely to have attempted suicide. Research continues to document that support from their parents and schools are some of the most protective factors for trans youth's health and well-being. And I don't know about you, but if there was anything that I could personally do to contribute in a positive way to someone's ability to survive and thrive in our community, I would do it. Finally, in regards to the policy decisions that we are discussing, having the specified policy protects the school system and the administrators from lawsuits and having to come up with procedures on the fly that may or may not be in line with other policies at various levels. This creates stress and strain both on the school personnel and more importantly, on the students and/or their parents or guardians that are involved in these decisions. The Equity Committee's policy, as written prior to the recent revision, alleviates that burden that we place on these youth and/or their parents or guardians and for them to have to advocate for what their child needs or what is best for their child when they may be unsure of themselves. I have seen the impacts of these stresses on students and families in our own community. Our school community should be supporting these youth and families and this policy is one way that we can do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eden Brock and then Nico Rensburger.
I'm Eden Brock and I am a senior at Blacksburg High School. So thank you for having me speak today and I want to speak in support of the proposed transgender policy from the Equity Committee. And I am cisgender. I have never had to experience things that people close to me who are trans have had to experience and I have heard a lot from students, from family members, and even from super close friends of mine. And I can't even imagine the, just how draining it can be emotionally to constantly be told that who you are is not valid and that you don't deserve the same comfort and safety at a place where you're supposed to be learning and you're supposed to be nurtured by teachers and adults and be told otherwise. So I, at Blacksburg High School, we have a pride club and it has been going for several years now and I have seen firsthand that it has provided such a safe space for students because they don't feel safe with most of the administration or with their own parents to be who they are. And I know that if a policy like this one that's being proposed was set in place, that a lot of people would be more comfortable of being themselves outside of a classroom. I've had classmates introduce themselves to me in class and then a week later at Pride Club introduce themselves with different pronouns and a different name and tell me not to use those in front of teachers because they're scared. And I, I'm graduating after this year and I want to leave the school without feeling like I'm leaving trans kids to be bullied and to feel like they don't deserve rights. And I know a lot of the parents who have spoken out against the policy have been stating that they are concerned for their children's safety and that having transgender people in the bathroom that they're comfortable in will jeopardize that safety. I am cisgender, I would rather a transgender woman be in a bathroom with me than to make her go in a bathroom where she feels like she's in harm's way or that she could get verbally or even physically assaulted just for being herself and not being allowed to be safe. And it's just, if I saw a trans woman in a bathroom, I would think nothing of it. She's there for the same reason I'm there, just to use the bathroom. It's not a whole debate on like, oh, they're in harm's way. If you're really concerned about children's safety, you need to focus on the safety of the trans youth that are constantly being stigmatized against and hated on just for being themselves. And they deserve to be as safe as we are in school, so, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nico Rensburger and then Jennifer Miller.
Hi, my name is Nico Rensburger and I'm a senior at Christiansburg High School and I would like to speak on MCPS Equity Committee's transgender policy. I am one of the seventeen transgender students you have on record. This is because I have been lucky and I have a supportive family. My experiences at CHS have been fairly positive, however, that is not the case for many of my transgender friends. Many of them have been bullied, harassed, and outed to their families. The atmosphere among the student body is unwelcoming to queer students. Many staff are ill-informed on transgender issues. You have the opportunity to change this by enacting policies to protect transgender students and educate faculty. The proposed policy is not perfect, but it is a step in the right direction. It is my hope that today you will vote to implement the proposed policy. However, the work does not stop there. The MCPS Equity Committee and the Student Equity Committee, which I am part of, can improve upon the policy and continue to educate our communities. It is only through consistent and diligent work that we will achieve a safe and supportive environment for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Miller and then Natalie Miller.
Good evening. So I'll just go ahead and tell you Natalie is my daughter, she's not here tonight, she's helping with orientation at CHS.
All right, thank you for letting us know.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Miller and I'm a resident of Christiansburg. My daughters are students at Christiansburg High School. Natalie is a senior and Bridget is a junior. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here this evening as a mom, as an ally, and as a Christiansburg High School parent who supports the transgender policy outlined by the Equity Committee. A few quotes from that policy. "All students have the right to learn free from discrimination and harassment." "All students have the right to privacy." "Every student has the right to be addressed by names and pronouns that correspond to their gender identity or expression." These are a few of the overreaching principles of this transgender policy. A few weeks ago, the board requested the help of students in presenting MCPS's core values to teachers as they begin the 2021-2022 school year. My daughter Natalie recorded herself saying one of these core values and submitted it to the school board to use in your presentation to the teachers. Those values read: physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement, and lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. So let's not get distracted from these values. If they, if we stay focused and committed to these core values, the solution is clear. There are those who would turn this into a debate about bathrooms and athletics. When we, when, who would allow the what-ifs to overshadow these core values? To those people, I say, if this were your child, how would you want them to be treated? For when one child is discounted, no child is safe. When we allow our fears about all the things that could go wrong to overpower our belief that every child should feel safe and valued, we have lost our way. When we focus, when we focus on the worst-case scenario rather than the best possible practices, we have lost our way. When we hold on to outdated and discriminatory thinking and policies, we miss out on the opportunity to live these core values and to create schools where everyone is safe and seen. To the LGBTQ community in our schools, I want to say in the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice. We see you, we value you, we will protect you, you can exhale, love wins." And to the board, I want to say, please vote to pass the Equity Committee's transgender policy as it was presented last week this evening and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Julie Quisenberry and then Jennifer Harris.
Hi, my name is Julie Quisenberry and I'm from Christiansburg, Virginia. And I also think that all students should be safe, but I feel that this policy endangers our female students. Him being the mother of a female student, that breaks my heart. I just do not, I don't feel like that predators, they are going to take every chance that they have out there and I feel like that this opens the door for the predators and does not keep our daughters safe. And I asked you, please, to consider that when you're considering voting for this policy because I think, yes, all students deserve to be safe, but that includes all of the female students in your schools and they are not presently safe. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Harris and then Jared By.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Harris and I am not from Blacksburg, I'm from Elliston. My daughter is a fifth grader at EMEs and I'm here tonight to express my concerns on the transgender policy that's presented for your approval. First, I find it suspicious that voting on this policy is taking place on a Tuesday before school begins when many schools are having back-to-school nights, so there's a lot of parents that can't be here tonight. Why does it seem like this policy is being pushed through last minute quietly and discreetly? In terms of the policy presented for your approval, it creates a path for students to use the restroom and locker room of their choice. Students may request to use the restroom and locker room that's different from their biological sex. The policy doesn't specifically address how this approval is going to be granted. What guidelines are, have been given to school administrators? Can any child identifying as opposite sex, or as identifying as gender of their opposite sex be approved to use the restroom of their choice? Do they have to express this gender identity for a day, a week, a month, a year? What's the guidelines for that? It's not very clear and as a parent, I have the right to know as it creates a situation that violates my daughter's privacy. Will parents be notified when this situation arises? Will I be notified if a boy is going to be allowed to use the restroom with my daughter or next year when she goes to sixth grade, change clothes in the girls locker room with her? If not, I'll be requesting an accommodation for my daughter to use a private restroom and changing facility and I hope you're prepared for these requests because should this policy be approved, I'm going to encourage all parents who have concerns similar to mine to email their school principal and copy each and every one of these school board members up here today so that you understand that there's quite a few concerned parents out there. Have you ensured that there's adequate private restrooms and changing rooms to accommodate all these requests at all the schools? I hope so. My next concern with the transgender policy is how gender identity is going to be addressed and taught in schools. You may say that gender identity is not part of the curriculum, but by implementing this policy, teachers and school administrators are forced to address this issue with students as young as five years old. Will gender identity be taught as part of family life? PE, health class, science, biology? What about high school electives like health sciences and anatomy? More importantly, is this already being taught to our children? If so, where's the opt-out form? I want to opt my daughter out of all classes that teach gender identity. Issues such as gender identity have no place in our school's curriculum. This topic is to be addressed in the home. Honestly, I don't trust the school system to teach the truth, to teach that gender is assigned at birth by God, our Creator who makes no mistakes. Teaching anything different is a violation of my family's religious beliefs. As a Christian, as a follower of Jesus Christ, I teach my daughter to love and respect everyone, everyone. However, respect and love does not mean that we have to agree with someone's lifestyle choices. What happened to the focus of schools being on reading, writing, and math instead of pushing a political agenda? Under no circumstances do I want any child to attend school in fear or to be bullied and the current anti-bullying policy is sufficient, the transgender policy should not be approved. There's too many unanswered questions regarding this policy and I encourage you to vote against it.
Chair? I'd like...
Chair, I, I thought we were not going to be having all the clapping.
I agree, and thank you.
Okay.
I'm not going to say it again. I had to say it too many times the last meeting. This is a respectful meeting. In order to give everyone a chance to speak, you have to remain quiet. Nothing in between. Okay? Our next person to speak is...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just would like to say, I think that if somebody is going to speak out of turn, then they should leave the audience. I think we need to set a, a policy here or a procedure for how this is going to be dealt with. Because when you just spoke, someone out in the audience decided they had something to say also, and that's not how this works. So if people in the audience want to speak when you're speaking, or when other people are speaking, or in between, they can leave. And that's what I think we need to ask them to do.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Jared Vai and then Michael Sanborn. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Jared Vai from Christiansburg, and I have three daughters in our public school system. I also serve as a pastor in Christiansburg. I'm not here tonight to be argumentative or cast judgment or condemnation. That's not what we need in this moment. We don't need insults or degrading comments or protests or shouting or any of those things. We need compassion and we need love and we need truth. Last week, we heard from a precious ten-year-old child who identifies as transgender, and there are many more like them. And the truth is, is that those lives do matter. They were created by God for a beautiful and special purpose. They were created to know Him and have a relationship with Him. I don't deny the struggle with identity that they feel. They feel what all of us feel in some way. It's a sense of brokenness. But it's a brokenness that no policy or school board can fix. Bathroom and pronoun policies are not the answer for what these kids are struggling with. The truth is, is that we're all broken. But the Christian message of the gospel that I preach week in and week out is that there is hope. There's hope for healing and restoration for wholeness, for wholeness. And this hope has a name, and His name is Jesus. Mrs. Cass, last week, you actually mentioned Jesus, and you're exactly right. He does love every single student. In fact, He loves them so much that He suffered and died on a cross so that every student could be saved. There is no one who walked on this earth that has more compassion than did Jesus. And yet, it was the same Jesus who said in Matthew 19 that God created mankind and that He created them male and female. Most of us in this room don't deny the existence of God, but it seems that many want to deny His standards and His authority over His creation. Concerning the policy before us, the truth is, is that there are many problems with it. In many ways, it's too vague and leaves too many unanswered questions. There needs to be much more discussion about what ensures the safety and well-being of all nine thousand-plus students that we have, and this policy is not it. There needs to be clear statements for teachers, students, and staff that ensure that their personal and religious freedom is protected, and this policy is not it. There is already a policy in place that provides protection from discrimination for every single student, and it sufficiently satisfies the guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. So please hear me. You can have love and compassion for these students, and you can vote no for this policy. You can do both, and that's what we're asking you to do tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Graham?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting. We've reached thirty minutes.
Okay. Board members, we have reached thirty minutes. We have an option to extend public address for an additional thirty minutes if we so choose. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding public address?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next speaker...
I would like to comment, I would like to comment on the gentleman who made sure to clap very loudly just then. Please don't do it again. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Graham, if I may, I apologize.
That's okay.
When we were getting started for public address, I should have let the board know that we had an out-of-residence speaker who signed up more than twenty-four hours in advance. I apologize. I was very caught up in getting our speakers on the phone. So you, you do have a request from a non-resident speaker? That person would be number twenty-six on our speaker list, so we haven't passed that person. I didn't want you to feel like they may have missed their, missed their chance. I emailed you about that this morning. You have the option to approve that non-resident to speak if you choose to do so.
Number twenty-six says Christians...
On the list of speakers.
Twenty-six says Christiansburg. That's why I was...
Oh, I see. You're looking at the list. I apologize. They called and spoke on the phone. If they're approved, they'll get put into the list. They'll get inserted.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm sorry for that confusion.
Anyone want to weigh in as to what they would like to do?
That's what we did last week also.
Yeah. Is everybody in agreement with that, or no? Can I see some head shaking?
I'm okay with that.
Are we all good?
Yep.
Was saying no? Because it meets our policy?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Got that, I think. Like, right? Okay, so no. Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's see where we're at. We're at Michael Sanborn and then next is Chris Thomas.
Good evening, Superintendent Myers and Board Chairman Graham and school board members. I begin with a statement that, I'm Michael Sanborn, Pastor Michael Sanborn. I live in Elliston. I begin with a statement that I believe that all of us are a creation of God and that none of us are exactly alike and that, nor do we remain the same through all of our decades of being alive. The vast majority of us change over the years in some fashion, and for that, I'm grateful as I look back on my teenage years. I now have grown past my misguided belief that people who have serious trouble with their gender identity are only seeking a different way to be noticed. I now realize that the choices they must make are not simply to put themselves out there, as so to speak, as someone, as some would have us believe. Most human beings who have a gender challenge find themselves going through a living hell as they find their bodies reacting in such upheaval and their psyches so much in turmoil, made all the more so by self-righteous people telling them to get over it and quit trying to get into somebody else's bathroom. Come on, how can anyone think that's a real issue when a young person is going through such a challenge that it too often leads to attempted suicide? All young people need to have significant loving support as they journey through puberty and into adulthood. As long as this problem is yours and not mine, it is too easy for me to want to make decisions for you and set rules for you. Then suddenly, it gets personal as the aloof and self-righteous person finds the problem is their own son, their own daughter, someone they raised from infancy, and they fully know the agony the child is attempting to live through. Now, there is a completely different understanding of the problem, and the depth of pain involved is readily apparent. The story suddenly changes. I've seen that frequently in some pretty influential, strong-minded individuals as they find their mindset changed by the love they have for their child. Please, I implore you, make your best decisions because the human being you support, you impact, are all worthy of your love and support. They are not some aberration that needs to be dealt with. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Thomas, and then after that, it will be Susan Morikawa, who is on the phone.
Good evening. My name is Chris Thomas. I'm from Christiansburg, Virginia. I rise before you today in support of the policy as proposed by the Equity Committee prior to amendment. I composed a number of remarks this evening, which I have chosen to deviate from because, quite frankly, the response from, from the room has, has left me humbled. So let me instead merely point out to this board, you exist to serve the students of Montgomery County Public Schools. That is your first, your foremost, and if we were to be honest, your only responsibility. There may well be a number of churches in this area that have deep concerns about where their precious children may or may not use the bathroom or with whom they may comport themselves. But that is not your concern. Your concern is to make sure that the students in our community have a safe place in which to receive their education and to ensure that that education is provided to them in the manner prescribed by law. The Virginia Department of Education has been extremely clear. The Virginia Senate has been extremely clear. The Virginia Legislature, the Virginia Governor have all been extremely clear. This board has no choice but to comport itself as it has been ordered to do so. The state has a fundamental right to oversee education and the way that education is administered in the Commonwealth, and failure to do so opens this board, this school system, and indeed, each of you individually to legal action. So please take your responsibility seriously. Please see that you respect the rights of transgender students in Montgomery County, and please see that you do so in accordance with the law. Because I assure you, there are those among us, there are those within the Commonwealth who would see that you will do so, and they will see you in school, or they will see you in court. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Morikawa and then H. Nicholson. Both are via phone. Do we have Ms. Morikawa on the phone?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Morikawa.
Hello.
Just state your name and where you're located and go ahead and speak.
My name is Susan Morikawa. I live in Blacksburg, and I'm here to speak to the policy decision you will make tonight regarding gender identity issues. I reviewed the two policies. One is the four-page policy drafted by the Equity Committee. The other is a comprehensive sixty-one-page document, which I believe is the current policy for MCPS. It's pretty daunting to read through sixty-one pages, but I looked for specific policy related to gender or transgender student supports. What I found was language about providing education opportunities to meet the needs of students in a world with rapidly changing social order, language about planning based on a dynamic point of view, about not discriminating for reasons of gender identity, and about believing that schools should be safe havens for students within the community. These are aspirations and goals, but I did not find specific guidance on how to handle supports for students navigating the uncharted terrain of gender identity and expression. The four-page policy drafted by your Equity Committee does provide that guidance. It aims to minimize stigma. It helps staff understand the relevant terminology, outlines the process for handling student records and maintaining privacy for dealing with bullying and harassment, and it affirms a student's right to express a chosen name and chosen pronouns. The involvement of parents or guardians is honored throughout the document. Issues around gender identification and expression are challenging for many of us. They seem new, uncomfortable, and hard to understand. The existing policy aspires to support all students, but does not say just how for these students that would be accomplished. The Equity Committee policy is a helpful document. As a tool, it gives specific guidance to MCPS professionals working to implement the policy and intention of existing policy. Staying with only the current policy does not help students or staff. It just kicks the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have H. Nicholson. We'll need just a moment to get him on the line.
Sure, thank you.
And then after that, it will be Lisa Dowell.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead and state your name and address and you can... I'm sorry, your name and place, location, and then you can speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is H. Nicholson. I reside in Blacksburg, Virginia. I am here as an ally and supporter of the LGBTQ community and pledge full support for the equity policy for transgender students. I wanted to follow up on a statement that Penny Franklin made at the last meeting. I myself speak as an African-American woman as a physical reminder of a community that was once marginalized, segregated, discriminated against, and violently denied their civil rights by schools, federal and local governments, pastors, churches, and citizens. This is a sorrowful part of our history. But I also speak here proudly as a full citizen because of the legacy and struggle of those who fought and died to dismantle laws that oppressed and segregated my parents, my grandparents, my great-grandparents, and so on. We know this history, and we cannot forget this history in order not to perpetuate denying civil rights onto another group. Our history of segregation, hate against those that are deemed different, and violence did not change because we told others not to discriminate. It required laws, policies, systemic change, intentional action of institution, and the courageous will of people. The Virginia General Assembly passed laws in 2020 to protect transgender students, and there are many who would like to deny transgender students their rights. We cannot just add a line of legalese or assume an anti-discriminatory statement covers all. We must educate, train, protect, enact policies, and this school board must lead. These policies and this bold stand to support the laws and policies written by the Equity Committee must come from the school board in unanimous support because it is the laws, the policies, and its will that dismantles institutional practices that denies humans their civil rights. I stand here as a reminder of a group that was denied their civil rights, and I will stand boldly on the side of transgender students and the equity policy that seeks to protect their civil rights. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Dowell and then Jessie Brack.
I'm a little bit taller than you. I don't know if you can hear me, but... Lisa Dowell, Christiansburg. Good evening. I'm here to ask you to keep the policy you have in place for the transgender community and shred the proposed policy. This isn't about feeling accepted. It's solely about the safety for all children. I applaud the teachers in our schools that are here for these kids who are confused, as they should be. They should all feel loved and welcomed. A bathroom locker room is a place where we go to do things like using the toilet, washing our hands, and changing our clothes. It's a place where our children's private parts are exposed. It is not a place to go and socialize or feel loved and accepted. You go in, you do your business, and you leave. But it's also a vulnerable place for our kids when their clothes are not covering all of their bodies. Unfortunately, we have a plethora of perverts in our world of all ages, and they do not discriminate based on gender or identity. They will identify as male one day and female the next. I have an autistic child. Predators prey on kids like my son, kids that desperately want... Predators prey on kids like my son, kids that desperately want to fit in that don't always have the understanding of right and wrong, where they follow the lead of others because they don't know any better. You are putting my child in danger with your proposed policy, and if you do proceed with your proposed policy, my child will not be allowed to use the same bathroom as his male peers. You will have to make other accommodations for him. Let me ask you a question. Have any of you sitting on this Board tonight ever been sexually assaulted? I have, multiple times. I can promise you, it's not something you ever forget. That will be on your hands, all of you sitting there. Are you ready to take on that responsibility when a child is sexually assaulted because of the decision you make tonight? You have the potential to negatively affect a child for the rest of their natural lives. I grew up here in these schools. There is zero supervision in our school bathrooms. It is my job as a parent to ensure the safety of my kids at all costs. I send my kids to school for an education, and I expect a school to have a safety measure in place. I have a child that cannot come home and tell me when he's been hurt and by whom. I've already had to pull one of my kids out of public school and place her in private school because of this kind of nonsense and others that many other families do not have the luxury of. I demand you do the right thing, the safe thing, for all of these children in our public county schools, and leave the bathroom measures you already have installed in place. A few statistics for you from a local police officer. One in ten children will be sexually abused before the age eighteen. Ninety percent of children who are sexually abused know and trust their abuser. About thirty-five percent of victims are eleven years old or younger, and about forty percent are abused by older and larger children. I'll leave you tonight with this quote. "The state must declare the child to be the most precious treasure of the people. As long as the government is perceived as working for the benefit of the children..."
Thank you. Your time is up.
"...the people will happily endure..." Adolf...
Jesse Brock, and then Travis Williams.
If you want to get...
Hello, I am Jesse Brock, and I am a trans alumni of Blacksburg High School. I've actually talked to you all before, and what should be handed out to you is a list of statements from other transgender and queer students that I collected in a short time of about five hours, and it's a whole page already. So imagine what I could have collected if I had more time. I had a different plan until of what I just heard. As a trans student, trans children are more likely to be sexually assaulted for being transgender. I don't have the specific source for you, but if it's a quick Google search. As someone who has been sexually harassed and sexually assaulted, I do take issue with it being used against transgender students, as there is not one case of a trans person sexually assaulting somebody in the bathroom or using their transness to sexually assault somebody. Your issue is with pedophiles and people who feel like they have power over others, not the transgender community. I do want to encourage you to take up the policy that was presented by the Equity Group, purely because there are many trans students who I know personally and I've heard stories of who have been abused, unhomed, disowned, and some even killed because their parents could not accept the fact that they are transgender. If you care about the safety of transgender students or students in general, you will adopt this policy to avoid many students being abused. Based on statistics, as we like to bring those up, there's probably about one hundred and eighty students in all of Montgomery County who are transgender or gender nonconforming. Two percent of all students are transgender, and that's about how many would line up with Montgomery County. Also, out of all the people here who don't support the policy, at least one of you probably has a transgender child, and I do want to say shame on you for not making your home a safe place where they can come and talk to you about this. You being out here shows your children and other children that they cannot trust you with a deep and personal part of themselves. Many transgender students don't come talk to the administration nor the school board for a very similar reason. Many have been outed to their families, who I will mention again, disowned them and abused them because they were outed by the school. So if we do care about the safety of our students, I will encourage you to take the Equity one, which protects trans students from being outed to their families. There are not many safe places in the world for transgender people or queer people in general, not even at their homes sometimes. So can we at least try to make school a place where people can come and feel safe so they can properly learn? Since we want to focus on education, we should make everybody feel safe. And to do that, to properly learn, we need to protect everybody, including transgender students. Thank you.
Thank you. Travis Williams, and then Sharon Brockman.
Travis Williams, I'm from Christiansburg. And I'm not here to tell you which way to vote on a policy. I think, based on last week, it looked like it's probably going to pass. Instead, I'm here to kind of share what I hope we get to see some of tonight. First and foremost, I think it's critical for all of us to keep in mind that one of the foundations for our school system is that no matter who a student is, no matter what they're going through, no matter what district they're from, each student entrusted to our schools, they need to feel safe, supported, and like they got a fair shot at an educational experience, getting the most out of it. I honestly think that every person that's come up here and spoke, every person that spoke last week, and all of y'all think that, otherwise you wouldn't be here on a Tuesday night doing this, neither would any of them. But sometimes I think it's easy, when we disagree on stuff, to forget about that common ground and retreat to our corners. And I think when we go to our corners, all we really end up doing is shouting at each other until we come back out and fight. So my hope is that we get a really good public conversation tonight. I hope the policy is... I hope you get to hear from everybody prior to a decision being made, and I hope that the practical implications of that policy on everyday lives are made clear, and all voices are allowed to speak, all addresses are concerned, all concerns are addressed rather than dismissed. You know, and listening to folks, a lot of different folks have different concerns, and different folks don't always agree with each other's concerns. They don't always agree that they're legitimate. This happens a lot in our society. I've told people before, it's kind of like when my toddler, he might be afraid there's a monster in his closet. I'm like ninety percent sure there's not a monster in his closet, but I'm a hundred percent sure that his fear is real. And I'm also a hundred percent sure that until I address that head-on with him and I treat that fear like it's legitimate, then I can never help him overcome that fear. There's a lot of different concerns about this policy. You've heard some of them tonight. You may not agree that all of them are legit, but they're all real concerns. The feeling is real. And so no matter, you know, what you think about that, I hope that you address them as a real, you address them head-on, and you address everything that you've heard tonight, every concern. And I hope, my hope is really that, you know, we've seen how this has shaken out across the state, and my fear, I think, is that the tension that may exist after this policy goes into place, or doesn't go into place, may filter down into our schools and into our students' lives. And I don't think that's good for anybody. I don't think anybody wants that. So my hope is that no matter how you end up choosing to vote, that you make your best effort to address every single concern. You present a clear picture of how this decision is going to be best for all our students, and I hope you go out of your way to ensure that every parent has the confidence that when they send their kid to school, they'll be safe, supported, and encouraged to reach their full potential in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Brockman, and then Kevin Alexander.
Does it go down at all? I'm not sure that's going to work.
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Sharon Brockman. My address is Christiansburg, and I'm the parent of an Auburn High student. I have notes here to talk about safety and how this policy does not adequately address safety, especially for non-trans students. I'm thinking about girls in particular, even though I am not the parent of the daughter. I only have sons. But Ms. Harris and Ms. Dowell address that concern very articulately, so I'm not going to take the time and rehash what they had to say. They did a better job than I have here. But instead, I'm going to talk about fairness in relation, again, to girls. Another area, in addition to restrooms and locker rooms that males and females are separated in, is athletic competition. In Connecticut, two transgender athletes won a combined fifteen state championships in girls' track over a three-year period. One of those athletes broke ten records previously held by female athletes. How fair was that to the female athletes in Connecticut? What would you say to the girl who came in second, or the girl who came in third, depending on if the two transgender athletes were one and two? How about the girl who loses her spot on the team to a biological male? No less than tennis legend Martina Navratilova, hardly a conservative spokesman, has spoken publicly about the innate unfairness of males, whom biology generally makes bigger, faster, and stronger competing against females. She's even part of an organization now. It's called Women's Sports Policy Working Group. And this group is all about how you make sports relevant to girls in this day and age. And they do address trans athletes, and the proposals that they come up with are not a one-size-fits-all policy that your Equity Plan does, which says that students participate based on their consistently asserted gender identity or expression. If you go to this group, they have realized that that doesn't work, and that will essentially spell the end of girls' athletics, which is a real shame. And this is why we have things like Title IX. My mom went to school in Montgomery County in the sixties and seventies, and it was definitely a two-tiered de facto against girls system. And if we roll, we implement this transgender policy, we are rolling back fifty years of progress for female athletes and girls in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Alexander, and then Alicia Bott.
I'm Kevin Alexander from Christiansburg. I have not read your policy. I choose to read another policy frequently. It's called the Bible, and I'm going to hold its truth as it supersedes any policy that any government, national, local, or state, will ever implement. Here we are at another school board meeting that's going on all throughout America, talking about things that absolutely have nothing to do with teaching kids how to read, write, and count better. I do believe that's what schools are for, but we shouldn't be surprised as we stand here tonight. Our founding fathers once said, many of them Christians, and that's what this attack is ultimately against, said if we kick God out of schools, chaos will reign. Well, we chose to kick God out of schools in the early nineteen-sixties, and I think I can make an easy argument, chaos reigns in schools today. Men and women want to make their own decisions, and they want to do what's right in their own eyes. That's a sign Jesus is about to come back, for those of you who don't know. My parents, when they went to school, they didn't have school resource officers. They didn't have cameras in schools and buses. They didn't have to lock their doors. They didn't have access cards to get in the school building. Maybe we should try God again, because I've got news for us. Over the last sixty years, our way's not working very well. Our education system is failing our kids. Our performances are lower than ever before. Anything done tonight, anything that you vote on, will be a failure if God is not involved. There's nothing more chaotic than the transgender issue. God has wonderfully and fearfully made male and female. Everyone here tonight is a byproduct of a relationship between a male and a female. Then man said, "I want to make my own decision." The boy says, "I want to be a girl." But I got news for the young fella, he's still a boy. The girl says, "I want to be a boy," but she's still a girl. What if a group of boys come to school next year, and they say, "We want to be dogs today"? Are you going to build a dog kennel for them? This has no end in sight to it. If you think it does, you're only kidding yourself. It's time to stop confusing and lying to our children. God is not a god of confusion. It's really simple. It's not real difficult. My wife and I have six children, and I've seen her give birth to all six children. When they come out of her womb, I can easily tell if it's a boy or a girl. And God wonderfully made that little boy and that little girl, and He wants that little boy and that little girl to prosper in His eyes. It's time for the Board to lead and not follow, no matter what Richmond says. Real men and real women of character, they do what's right, even if no one else is doing it. I beseech you tonight to do what's right, not in your own eyes, Board, not in my eyes, not in anybody's eyes out here, but in the eyes of the Lord Jesus Christ. Because whether you believe it or not, one day you will stand before this holy God and give an account for what you've done, and I will stand for what I've done. Praise Jesus for dying for us on the cross. Amen. God bless you.
Our next speaker... Ms. Graham, we have reached the second thirty minutes. Okay. Board members, we've reached the second thirty-minute mark. We have the option to extend public address at the end of our meeting. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding public address?
I'd like to motion that we extend public address after, just at the end of our meeting.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll start with you after we finish our part of the business. Okay? We will start with you after we finish all the rest of our school board business. I realize that, but I also just found out we hit our thirty-minute mark, and the Board voted to...
So you're not voting against?
After... Yes, you're welcome to speak after we... That is undetermined. It depends on how long it... It depends on how long it takes us to get through our board business. Thank you.
Ms. Graham, if I may, it's been an hour and a half, if I may be so bold.
Yes.
May we have a little break?
Absolutely. Thank you. Board members, I can direct you to the restrooms if you'd like to take a break. I'll put it on my calendar and invite you.
Yeah, I did good, because I think I already marked it.
Did you?
As a possibility.
Or then you can invite me.
As a possibility. Let's see what I did. Yeah, I think I put it...
Okay, I'll stick it on mine real quick.
Yeah.
Two-minute warning. We're back, folks. We're ready to start again. If everybody could have a seat and settle down? Thank you. We have all of our board members ready? All right. Policies, 7-1.5. Policy and Practices for the Treatment of Transgender and Gender Expansive Students. As you know, the General Assembly requires that the local school boards to adopt policies on the treatment of transgender students that are consistent with the model policies developed by the VDOE. The state requires these policies to be adopted no later than the 2021-2022 school year. We've been provided with two options based on our last closed session conversation with the attorney. The board asked for the policy from the Equity Committee to be brought forward for your vote tonight. That policy is presented to us tonight for a second reading and approval. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding policy 7-1.5?
I'll move. I'll make a motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So I just want to... I'm going back in here again. The comment that's come up a couple times this evening and one that I brought up before is about the parental notification. And we talked about that when we were here last week, and where did we go with that?
Ms. Whitaker, could you help us with that?
Absolutely. So the policy that you have in front of you is the one that was provided by our attorneys when we asked them to provide it in an approvable format. And so through the conversations with them, the understanding is that because parents do have the right in our policies, our other policies, you know, parents make decisions for their children until they are 18 years old, that we have already set that precedent in terms of parents being included. Students' privacy records, access to educational documents are all for parents to have access to until the child is 18, at which time they get to make those decisions. And so that's the guidance that was provided, and so is where it went with the "and" or was what they provided to us, to remove "or" and leave "and." Does that address your question, Ms. Cass?
Well, it addresses the question, but it doesn't address... But I still have a concern.
You mind if I...
Yeah, go ahead.
So my question on that is, what about, you know, say we have a senior, even a junior, who's 18 years old. Wouldn't... I thought that "and/or" was in there to basically protect, you know, to basically let us make that determination based on age. I do believe that we were counseled that the state of Virginia believes that it is parents who get to make the decisions for their children, and so... But I thought that once that child is 18 years old, they can make those decisions. So wouldn't our... With this change, wouldn't our policy basically, I don't know what the word is, it'd be in violation of something, probably, but I don't think our policy would be quite right if we had "and" in that situation, would it?
So I don't think that... I don't think that our other policies throughout our policy manual consistently speak to "and" or "or" to give an age delineation, that at the age of 18, you know, that students then make their decisions. So I think in terms of consistency throughout the manual, that it is in line with that. However, you know, within the educational record component of our policy, it does speak to once students turn 18 years old, then at that point, they have a right to decide who has access to their records. So that's where I would go with the 18-years-old. You could make an amendment to clarify that at the age of 18, you know, if you wanted it to be specifically written in, but I would say I don't think it's in there, because none of our other policies spell out in each one at 18.
Okay, I understand that, then. And so it sounds to me like that provision is there, it's just not spelled out. And so I guess maybe my next... As far as making a provision, I mean, I'm happy to go along with the will of the board on this, but I guess if anything, it seems to me that maybe we need to update, maybe not necessarily all of our policies individually, maybe we do, or maybe we put a clarification somewhere in our policies that, you know, for all of our policies that deal with this type of a thing, that when you are 18, blah, blah, blah. I don't know the best way to do that, but maybe the next time we update our policies, we should look at adjusting that language? I don't know.
Yes, sir. I can take note of that, and as we do policy review, look to make sure we have it specified, and if not, bring something forward to the board.
What are the rest of you guys thinking? I just made one suggestion, but I'm...
Yeah, I mean, it's okay. Of course, you know, under 18, they have to, you know, still follow the guidelines that parent has a right to make the decisions. For over 18, I mean, I guess taught automatic assumption, you know, when you're over 18, you are on your own, you know, person, and do all those things. You have the right to do those. But it would be probably nice to have it somewhere says that.
Yeah.
You know, instead of assuming that's the case.
Sure.
I still have a problem with... I want this policy to pass, and I know that I'm in the minority on this. And so I don't expect that anybody would want to change it, but I really do have concerns about our students who are concerned. I mean, we heard a couple people speak this evening about the fear that they have in telling their parents. And I just... And I know that we have written, I see we've written here, "The counselor will speak to the student to determine the level of support the student may need prior to scheduling a meeting with their parent." I just hope that that is something where we really are providing them with some strong counseling and advice, because I'd hate to see something happen to a student because they... We force them to talk to their parent about it, and something happens. And it does happen. So I think that I just have a strong concern with that. I just want to voice that I do have that concern. I would prefer that we not have it. It should still be "and/or," but I don't think I will be able to convince anybody else of that, so...
I don't think that's true for me. I mean, I would go along with that if it was the will of others. I just, at some point, we need to, you know, we could do that now, just to be clear in this policy, but at some point, we're going to need to clean up the language through our policy. I think it's kind of like what we did for our discrimination clause a few years back, right? We had these clauses all over our policy, and some of them said different things than others, and at some point...
We threw them all up.
Yeah, we went through and cleaned everything up, and, you know... But I think, Sue, to your point, I think that it is important that... It's important that we follow the law, and it's important that we do the right thing. And, you know, the question is, what wording do we need in order to do that?
So this is also something that has, you know, been on my mind for... Ever since the issue came up as to how the student or the parent become aware of their And I truly believe that there will be some students who may be physically harmed, will be kicked out onto the streets, and then we have another issue that we have to deal with. So I want to make sure that when our counselors are talking with our students about risk factors, that we are following up, and that we do advise our student how to make sure they're reporting what's going on, so that we can get services in place to protect the children. That has to happen.
I'll echo that as well. I'm adamant about that. Anybody else?
I mean, definitely, I want the kids that are not supported by the parents be protective. And I know the parents have the rights because they're under 18, but, you know, we definitely don't want... But I'm pretty sure, Ms. Whitaker, you may help us out with that. We have other protective policies that, you know, in terms of the child abuse and home life and...
Yes, absolutely. But what we can do, too, is work to make sure that, you know, we make kids more aware of those processes, you know? We can try to do that. You know, we always are going to protect anybody who is in a situation of discrimination or harassment, but making sure those individuals know how to go through the processes that we have is something that we can try to, you know, make sure that we make more prevalent. They are in the handbook and also on our website, but, you know, that's something people, you know, go looking for to find. But absolutely, you know, if there's ever a concern in terms of child abuse, we are mandated reporters, and so if a child shared that, we would be mandated to share that with Child Protective Services, but also our counselors are well-prepared to, you know, provide supports to our students as well.
And the important thing is that, you know, for any policy, not just this policy, probably policies shouldn't be in place for the policy's sake. I think the education beyond it and through it is very important, whether we, you know, our staff or counselors or even the family is supporting or not supporting. We have to find a way of educating. I guess this is part of our job, education.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Ms. Graham, are we still having discussion?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So with that being the case, I want to go ahead and point out this evening, I want to thank all of our public speakers for coming to speak. I appreciate your thoughts and your concerns. One thing that did stand out to me with just about every speaker that we either had last Tuesday or this evening is the fact that everyone made a point to point out that they are concerned about every student, and I emphasize "every." And they also said they want fairness and safety for all, and I emphasize the word "all", students. So forgive me if I sound like a broken record if you were here last week, but I just want the community to know, if you're not aware, what the most important and specific job of a school board member is. That job is for us to provide safety for all students and us to provide an adequate education for all students. That is our job. That is our main job. So with that, I would like to read a section of our Code of Ethics, which states, "Recognizing that persons who hold public office have been given a public trust, and that the stewardship of such office demands the highest levels of ethical and moral conduct. Any person serving on the Montgomery County School Board should adhere to the following Code of Ethics." The first thing listed on that Code of Ethics is uphold the Constitution, laws, and regulations of the United States, of Virginia and Montgomery County never knowingly being a party to their evasion. It also states, "Be loyal to moral principles and the educational interests of the citizens of the county." We have adopted different language in our Code of Ethics and the following policies, which I'm not going to read, but I urge you, if you have not read them, they're on our website, and you will probably be getting them very soon if you have a child in the in the public school system because it will be in with a boatload of papers that you will be getting home from your child. It states, adopt policies and programs that support our rights and recognize the needs of all citizens regardless of, and I quote, race, color, religion, national origin, sex, pregnancy, childbirth or related medical conditions, age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, political affiliation status as a veteran and genetic information, including family history. I would like to point out that the board met on May the fourth of 2021 to update our policies. And the listed adjectives that I used for descriptions was said verbatim as to what the Code of Ethics read. I would also like to point out that the following policies that we updated are the Code of Ethics, which is Policy one dash one point seven, our Equal Employment Opportunity Policy, which is five dash one point one, Policy five dash one point two, which is sexual harassment, harassment based on race, national origin, disability and religion, Policy seven dash seven point one, Equal Educational Opportunity. We also have policies stated of inclusivity, civil rights statement, special ed plan, et cetera. We have a Code of Conduct that you can find on our website that every child has to read and is supposed to sign and turn back in, as well as the parent is supposed to sign, read and turn back in to let the school know that you have seen this and are willing to abide by it. With that being said, and since we all are here for the safety of all students and everyone's safety, I would like to say that I am going to be voting no on the ethics policy due to the fact that I don't believe and feel that this provides adequate safety for all students and everyone. I have listened to people from my district and I have listened to people from all over the county. There is major concerns. I do however, support the VSBA policy with all of the legal additions to it that anyone can look up and see, which is bounded by law and protects us by law and me, protects me by law as well. I'm sad to hear from some of our transgender students this evening that you have been bullied, harassed and all of the above. That is not okay, that is not okay with me. I am here to represent all students and you are a part of the word all and everyone. This needs to be fixed. If this is happening in our school system and you don't feel like you can report this and I've been given not correct information from the administration of whom I trust and depend on to give me the right information, I want you to email me and contact me if you don't feel comfortable or safe going to anyone else. And I can assure you, I will make sure that your issues and concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I'm just gonna ditto what Ms. Barton said, she said it very eloquently. I've spent the last two weeks, last meeting, I didn't say anything. I listened, I got a phone call that said that it seemed like sometimes the board members vote on their thoughts and opinions opposed to what their district or the needs of the students were. I didn't want to be one of those people. So I listened carefully the last two weeks to everything that everybody had to say. And I've read every email, I've made phone calls to friends, family, people lives in my district, people that lead different lifestyles than I lead. And I've tried to ask anybody that I thought would weigh in a different view or have a different thought process. But consistently, I got the same answer from the district that voted me in. And I understand that I'm here to support everybody in this county, but we all represent and we're a voice for the district that we do represent. So that's what I am doing tonight. We did bring forth the equity policy to vote on, but I'll am in support of the policy that we already do have in place with the VSBA recommendations that are lawfully accepted. I do protect all of the equal rights of all students and I too, anybody who knows me doesn't, I, I don't want to see anybody mistreated or treated unfairly. And, and that's not what this, for me, is about trying, just because I'm voting no, I want to see everybody treated fair. But I don't think we've had the adequate time in our buildings to provide the, the privacy and the comfort level for all students.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, I haven't spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm totally sorry.
So I remember when we were talking about the Confederate flag and I was very, very upset when the board, who I was proud of, said, yeah, no more in our schools. But then turned around and said, we need time to educate folks as to why. So it's gonna be, won't be implemented till January. Well, this kind of reminds me of the same thing. It's an education piece that is built in to the policy that we're gonna be educating folks on how we make sure we are respecting and meeting the needs and making sure that all of our students feel safe. I've received emails from folks who have said, oh, you can't compare race and this issue because it's not the same. I beg to differ. Anybody who thinks that's not, come and live in my shoes for about a month and maybe you'll understand, oh, yeah, maybe it is the same. You treat it different because you say you're different or you look different and it doesn't matter if it's my skin color, my size, my sexual identity, my race, my national origin. If you're different, quite frankly, in this country, which includes Montgomery County, you can be treated differently. And quite frankly, our students are the most vulnerable because they are children. And children can be very, very cruel. And we have adults that can be very, very cruel. And I have experienced that in this district. So I take great exception to folks who say it's not the same. Being treated in a way that is not with respect and dignity and that you're feeling safe in a school building is the same. It's the same. And as far as aligning the rest of our policies, absolutely that needed to happen, but it does not cover and it does not speak to our trans students. And just like we had to amend our constitution so that black people could vote, so that women could vote, so that we could be included, this is the same thing. It's acknowledging our students to make sure they understand that they're heard and that we are going to put things in place to protect them. Because as I said last week, if we roll this back about fifty years or so, the same comments that are being made now are the same comments. We're afraid for our female students because the black males were going to be coming into the schools. Oh, now you couldn't have the colored and the white bathrooms, so, that's not gonna be safe for many different disgusting reasons that people try to justify. So I have to do, I do have to say, I do have concerns as far as sports. I was an athlete. I came through when Title IX was really being pushed and not being enforced and there were a lot of opportunities I probably missed because Title IX was just not looked at. And I had some coaches very upset with me a few times when I didn't buckle to the way that they treated female athletes. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm watching that. And in the policy, it talks about a, a committee that is to be formed to make decisions on how our students may participate or not participate. So I would like to know more about how that committee is going to be formed, who is going to be on it. So that is something we do need to dig deeper into to see how that is, what that's gonna look like. But I am in full support, as I said last week. Don't necessarily understand everything, but I do understand we need to treat people with dignity and respect and this will help us get there. And the whole, things are equal now, that's like the separate but equal. Whole thing that was supposed to appease black people, it's separate but equal, it was not.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to just add, because before I was just qualifying some of the, the language, I just wanted to add that I, I hear what people, the concerns of, of some of these parents who have spoken tonight. And what I hear a lot is fear and that students being uncomfortable in bathrooms, feeling awkward, concerns about predators, concerns about how the policy, what's being taught in school. And I guess the one thing I, my takeaway is that instead of making policies to support the fear, what we need to do is be making policies that we should be working to help all of our students become more accepting of other people. And by, by not, I, I think we need, this policy will help. And I think that it's really important that we, we let our students, teach our students to respect people no matter what their preferences are or what their color is. And I, some of the information that I think people are concerned about, the, the predators in the bathrooms and what's going to happen, predators are out there, I know, you're right, there are people who are predators. But that, they've been out there, this had nothing to do with trans people. Predators exist and you're right, there could be a predator in, in the high school or in the middle school. And it's not because they're trans, it's, it's, anybody could be a predator. And so, yes, we want to protect our students, we want to keep our students safe. But to, to believe that a transgender student or a non-binary student is going to create harm, I, I just, I, I don't believe that's accurate. And I don't believe that in, by passing this policy, we're going to now see a big increase in students using bathrooms that they're not supposed to use. I would guess there's probably boys who've tried to go in the girls' room before and without any of this conversation, just because. So, because that's what people, that's what kids do. They do things, they like to try to do things that they shouldn't. And I don't think this is opening it up to now having this giant influx of, of males running into the girls' room. And whoever said our, our bathrooms weren't safe, unfortunately, there have been a couple of, of instances where things have happened in the restrooms and that is, is very true. And I know as a former teacher, we try very hard to make sure our students are, we know their whereabouts at all times, but you can't stop every person from making a mistake. But to, to place that on, on trans students, I, I think that that's, we're, we're, we're giving into fear that we, we really don't need to, to give into. Anyway, I, just one other mention, somebody mentioned tonight about, you know, a sense of brokenness for trans, trans students, I don't think they're broken at all. I think they're just kids and I don't see how we could ever consider a child to be broken. I, I think that's kind of insulting. That's it.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I, I also want to say, I, I'm gonna vote yes. I, I think the issue we talked about earlier was one of my only concerns. But it was heartening, I think, to hear from one of our, you know, seventeen registered trans students, Nikos, who spoke in support of the proposed policy, but, but vowed for, for more work to be done. So I think that that's the right, the right thing to do. So I think for me, it's clear from the perspective of the law that we need to pass this policy. I think it's clear from the perspective of teachers who have reached out to us, clear from non, a, a lot of our students, whether they're, they're transgender or not, that, that this is needed in our policy. I think it's clear from the perspective of our community. I acknowledge that we have heard from, from both sides and that there are concerns there, but I think that a lot of those concerns have been addressed to those who would listen. And, you know, is our current policy enough? No, absolutely, I don't think it is. I mean, certainly from a legal standpoint, it's not, but I would also say, beyond the legal standpoint, it's not enough, that we do need to, to spell it out. We need to spell it out to our staff because not, you know, probably not every single person that works for us is clear on how we need to, to handle these things. For our students, all of them, they also need to know what our expectations are for our community. But most of all, for the benefit of our transgender community, for the, our transgender students, that they know that, that, that we see them and that we value them and that we're gonna keep them safe. That's, came up several times and, and that's important. And, and speaking of safety, it's been said before and I'm gonna say it again, that the idea that, that us passing this policy somehow makes students less safe, it's exactly the opposite of that. And the evidence, we have been presented with not a single shred of evidence that passing a policy like this is going to cause safety issues for other students. The evidence is overwhelmingly in the opposite direction. The research shows the opposite. Professionals who have spoken to us and sent us emails have presented plenty of, of data and of research on this topic. This is, this is needed. We are a school system that bends over backwards for all kids. And in this case, we need to do the same thing for our, our trans kids. And I'd just like to say to our trans kids, to the trans and non-binary students and former students who came out and spoke, thank you so much. It's really important to hear the perspective on, on any topic that we, that we discuss as a board. It is so good to hear the perspective of the students because you guys are living it and, and I really appreciate it. And to, to current transgender, non-binary, queer, other LGBTQ plus students in our schools, you know, I hope that you see the overwhelming support that, that is there for you in our community. I see you, I value you, I appreciate you, I support you. And I hope that this policy, when it's passed, make sure that others will do the same and that it'll keep you safe, so I'm gonna be voting yes.
Anybody else?
I will, I will just, I know I, I think had my share before, but I definitely have no reservation in approving. And it is a Virginia law, it is supported by the conservative Supreme Court judges as well as Fourth Circuit Court. And discriminating against transgender students are illegal. I mean, it's just plain and simple. And the policy is not to change or deny rights of our non-transgender students. It is actually including the discriminated group of our students and discriminated and treated differently for so long, we are trying to include them. This is not a left and right issue, this is not a religion issue. This is the treat everyone, how you want to be treated issue. We have an obligation to protect all our students. We have an obligation to make them feel welcome and loved and supported. And this policy doesn't mean that our non-transgender students' rights will be taken away and their safety will be jeopardized. In contrary, the literature actually proves that the students who have been threatened, bullied and harmed have been the transgender students, not the other way around. Restricting the transgender bathroom use will do nothing to change these, you know, troubling statistics that actually perpetrators usually, you know, family members, someone that knows the victim and not a transgender student that we're gonna think tomorrow gonna run to the bathroom and be a pedophile. And the other aspect is transgender students who are trying to fit in and to find their identity, they're not out there to get attention and commit a crime. They're just trying to be loved, you know, respected, supported. And I think that's a human thing to do. I'm done.
Anybody else? All right, hearing and seeing, now the roll call, please. Just a reminder, the motion is to approve policy seven dash one point five as presented. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Policy, uh, the next agenda item is policy one dash six dash, one dash six dot eight, citizen participation. This policy update was requested by the board. The revisions allow speakers to provide their area of residence instead of their full physical address. The policy was brought for first reading at our July thirteenth meeting. It is brought back tonight for second reading and your vote. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding the citizen participation policy?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Would I have needed a roll call for that? Usually, but I think it was good. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, um, policy five dash seven point five, leave. This is the first reading of the adjustments to our leave policy. The FMLA adjustment is required by federal law. We cannot mandate that an employee exhaust all of their sick leave while they are on short-term disability. The second adjustment is brought forward for consideration. Funeral leave is changed to bereavement leave, and pregnancy loss is added as a reason to utilize bereavement leave. Again, this is just first reading. The next item on our agenda is encumbrances for open purchase orders. This is to authorize the superintendent to send a letter to the county administrator requesting that open POs encumbered during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year be re-appropriated to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding encumbrances on open purchase orders?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
What, what does this do on the, uh, budget? Because I'm assuming that, um, I'm assuming that last year, any of these POs that were open, we basically had carryover funds then that we probably used in another way, right?
No, what happens here is these encumbrances are the purchase order, so the goods and services have been ordered, the invoice has not been received, those funds carry over, the goods and services could have been received the end of July and the invoice not received, or the goods and services were received after June thirtieth. So the encumbrance ties to that invoice.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the school crisis plan. We are presented with the school crisis plans every year and must certify them to submit to the state. Mr. Garrettson emailed the plans last week to the board. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding the school crisis plans?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board, at the last meeting, um, we, uh, decided that we would revisit our health and safety protocols on September seventh. State law says that schools must provide an in-person instruction in a manner that adheres to the CDC guidance to the maximum extent practicable, practicable. Um, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K threat, pre-K through twelve regardless of vaccination status. Do we want to make any changes to that, or do we want to talk about?
I know at our last meeting, we said, um, when we, you know, approved, um, our plan to start the school year, uh, in school, all masks for all, uh, we made a, um, exception for teachers taking their masks off when there are no students around. But I think we, I suggest we should revise it as when they are alone in their rooms, maybe, but if they are with the other adults, they should be still with the masks. So, um, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, let me, um, just add one more thing. I just want to make it clear to those who are watching our live stream and in the audience that, um, the Virginia law requires us to follow the CDC guidelines at this point. So we, we do not have a lot of flexibility in, um, removing the masking until the CDC makes changes. Did I state that correctly, Ms. Whitaker?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So, so I think if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So to, um, Gunan's point, if we're going to be following the guidelines, then we need to adjust what we voted on last week.
That's correct.
Right, because the full guidelines say that, um, that masking must occur in indoor space, um, when around others, not just children. Is that correct as well?
Yes, it is. Uh, Mr. Garrettson might be the best one to come up and give you the specific guidance from the CDC.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then, if we voted when they're not around anybody, wouldn't that go along within buildings around somebody? Wouldn't that be the same thing?
Actually not, because we voted that they didn't have to wear a mask when they were around each other without children present. And the CDC guideline says indoor masking for everyone, even when students aren't present.
See, I thought we voted that they didn't have to wear masks as long as they weren't around anybody because of the factor of unvaccinated people.
No, we said students.
We just, I think, said students, yeah, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Garrettson.
Go ahead.
Um, basically, the guideline from the CDC was an addition. They, they put out that guideline first on July ninth, came back within a week, I believe, and essentially just added to the top that CDC had, uh, has updated its guidance for fully vaccinated people. CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. The CDC makes no provision for masks to be removed in the building whatsoever.
Yeah.
So I, I think that that's what our policy needs to be.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I agree. At least for the time being that the, this variant is going uphill.
All right, do, do I have a motion then?
Well, can we? Well, I, I'd like to talk, I, I'm sorry, Mark.
Well, if we put a.
Yeah.
If we put a motion on there.
Other things that have to do, because this says health and safety protocol, so I'm guessing this is when we would talk about other things besides just masking?
Such as?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, questions are starting, and I don't, maybe this isn't the right place to bring it up, so just tell me if we need to do it somewhere else. People are starting to ask about, well, what, what are going to be our guidelines for when, kind of going back to where we were, unfortunately, you know, when, when somebody's found positive, how are, what are we doing for quarantining? And also the, that would came up, the whole concept of, if students are out because of COVID, are we going to start, uh, asking teachers to, um, record their classes and all that kind of stuff? I, I guess, me, that falls under this, would that be?
It, it does, so why don't we take care of the masking first?
Okay.
And then I believe Mr. Garrettson can answer the rest of your questions. Is that, is that sound okay to the board?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, we can talk about, you know, how we're going to move forward.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, um, if the governor has already issued another mandate as far as school boards needing to follow CDC guidelines, do we, is there a vote or a motion that needs to be made?
I think we need to clarify it for our staff. But that, again, that, well, again, that's the will of the board.
So I think that's what we just decided we needed to do when you were about to ask for a motion.
Right.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion?
I move that we, uh, update our mask guidance to align with the CDC recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion? All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, now, um, Ms. Cass, if, if you could ask, um, Mr. Garrettson your questions, um, and we'll see if that answers your questions.
Mr. Garrettson, um, what have we thought about? Are you ready to start making phone calls?
Um, I, I'm ready to. Due as directed by the board, but, but I understood that we were not going to do phone calls this year, rather we were going to update, um, a division dashboard, and, and we have been doing that, um, we have been doing that as of yesterday.
What about corn, like, what happens now when there's COVID cases in the classroom? And obviously, we haven't started yet, but tomorrow we start. Um, oh, uh, do we have guidelines for that, or?
We do, yes ma'am. The, the VDH has shared a document, I'm sure you can't see it from here, um, but VDH has provided us, well, I should say the New River Health District, not VDH specifically, um, but they've shared a guideline with us that do, that does speak to close contacts, and it actually does make some provisions for fully vaccinated individuals versus those who are not vaccinated. And as we have began to, uh, communicate with, with our, our first few positive cases, uh, we're following the guidelines that are provided, um, by the Health District, and of course, once again, continuing to work hand in hand with our Health District to make sure that we are appropriately following the guidelines they have provided.
Would you mind telling us what those are, and is that information being disseminated to our staff?
Yes, ma'am. It, it's been shared with, um, principals already. It's also a publicly available document, so.
And I think Dr. Meyer shared with us that, that chart you're holding.
I believe I did.
Yeah, because I have it, so I think that's the only way, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy to share, uh, you know, there's a lot of pieces, but I am happy to share, I guess, some highlights. It does speak to being in close contact. Uh, there are some changes to the definition for a close contact. It says a close contact is considered to be indoors, unmasked, within three feet of someone for a cumulative time of fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period. So if we are uniformly or universally masked in schools, that immediately cuts back on the number of, of what would be considered close contacts. Uh, but if someone is identified as a close contact, then it goes to what is their vaccination status? Uh, if they are unvaccinated, um, then they will begin a quarantine. Uh, they, they will have to be out of school, they will begin a quarantine, and, and there is some, some differences based on whether they have symptoms or not. Uh, but if they're not vaccinated either by choice or because they're not old enough yet for the vaccine, it will take them out of school. If they are fully vaccinated with no symptoms, they can continue to come to school in masks. They just have to monitor symptoms. At a particular point in that process, they can choose, uh, to then, um, test, and that test result can either help get them, um, you know, we would say out of the mask, but, but they're in a mask by school guidance anyway. Uh, but it does allow them to come, to, to continue to come to school if they do not have symptoms. Um, if they do have symptoms, then they do begin an isolation period, even if they're as vaccinated individuals. And again, I apologize, there's many, many if, ands, and buts in, in the diagram, but I, but I do think we've shared that, and it is publicly available, and I'm, I'm happy to share it with you, uh, tonight, even as soon as I get back to my chair.
Oh, I, I just didn't know there was something beyond that. I mean, I, I did see that you shared that with us, I just didn't know if we had any other protocols. I guess, you know, at the elementary level, obviously, everybody's on vac, all students are unvaccinated, so, you know, there's only one route you can follow.
Well, and I think my question, you know, certainly in a classroom environment where you have, um, everybody masked, you're in a situation where if, you know, when a kid is found to have had, um, COVID, that, you know, any, anybody, any, any kid sitting next to him, even if they are three feet, right, um, would not fit the, the definition of exposure, right? So that, so that wouldn't be reported, the parents would not know that type of thing. But when, when you get to lunch, that's a different story, isn't it?
The mask will come off, yes sir, but we, we do have that three feet. And again, we do all of this in conjunction with the Health Department. So, so we're not making these decisions on our own. When, when we're aware of positive cases, we share that information with the Health Department, they begin the contact tracing, and based on that investigation, you know, they also begin to tell us, hey, we also need to speak to these three families, or we need to speak to this lunch person, this lunch worker. Um, so, again, these are the guidelines, and the guidelines have changed to decrease the number of folks who would be considered close contacts. But again, we're not, we're not doing that on our own. We do it with the guidance of the Health Department.
All right, but it's fifteen minutes, no mask, three feet or less, is that correct?
Yes, sir, indoors.
Indoors, okay.
Over twenty-four hours.
Over a twenty-four hour period, yes ma'am.
Uh, okay, so if two kids sit next to each other and eat lunch, even if it's in one of the stricter three-foot distancing situations, and the next day it's found out that kid A had tested positive for COVID, then kid B is exposed, correct?
The two students next to that individual.
Yeah, on either side, yeah.
Could, could be considered.
Okay.
Um, again, I think, I, I never like to speak for the Health Department, but I do think they also would, would really question, you know, three feet, are, are we, did we have any more or any less?
Sure.
Right, like, nobody's out there with the tape measure, so, so it is going to be a discussion and probably some, some, some judgment calls, some professional judgment calls from the Health Department. That would not be one we would make, that would be one they would make.
So, um, I mean, just thinking out loud here for, for me and for the benefit of my fellow board members, I mean, we, we've been thinking about this stuff all summer when, when the level has been extremely low. And then, you know, things ticked up a little bit, I think, last time. Uh, we were on the lower end of what the VDH considers low transmission, um, in the state. And by the time we started talking about this, I think we had basically ticked up to the high end of what's still considered low transmission. And, um, you know, as of now, we're, you know, our average definitely is, you know, we've sailed right through moderate and we're into substantial, and, you know, I hope that, that Dr. Bissell is, is right about the predictions that, um, that the epidemiologists are making, but, um, you know, do we have, you know, basically, what happens if we start, if we do start, yes, a lot of the science, I think, i- is based on the fact of the transmissibility of the previous variants, and, you know, we now know that this variant is, you know, two-point-something times more trans- transmissible. So if we start to see, like, I'm hearing reports about some schools, you know, down south that have opened earlier, they're starting to see some, some higher levels of transmission. If we start seeing these levels of transmission and if it's suspected that they're coming from lunch, because to me, that's definitely one of the more, um, risky, uh, situations that we might, you know, put, uh, put these kids in. I mean, I shouldn't say riskier, I'm not to say that it's risky, but riskier from a transmission point of view. Um, you know, are we, do we have the ability to, to even mitigate that outside of, you know, shutting down a classroom or a school building? Do we have the ability to, to, you know, do lunches in classrooms and stage them in different times and think, I mean, has that, has that come up in your leadership meetings? Is that part of the discussion for the future?
Yeah, I mean, we've, um, we've had this discussion with our principals and, um, you know, and simply talked about, um, you know, basically, uh, looking like it did at the end of last school year. I mean, this is how we ended last school year, doing the exact same thing. The only difference this year is we're not using barriers, you know, um, and, uh, that, that's the only difference. And so, um, you know, I, I know, um, Jason could probably speak to what our schools are doing. Of course, every school is a different situation due to its size and its, um, staffing ability and number of students, and so we have to give schools some autonomy in trying to figure it out with, with giving them some basic parameters, which we've done, and, um, and they're, they're working, uh, towards that. Um, in fact, when we, uh, talked to the principals, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Polly and, uh, Mr. Garrettson, but, you know, they were in, more in favor of making sure that we had sufficient space, because you remember the original, uh, plan that we had sort of, we had talked to you about was, um, was a little less stringent, actually. And so, if you want to speak to what you know each, some of the schools are doing and how they're handling it and. So if you want to speak to what you know each, some of the schools are doing and how they're handling it and.
I think you addressed it well, Dr. Meyer. I mean, it really is a situation where we would fall back to last year's plan. You know, and of course, the ramifications of that, of course, means more lunches in classrooms, more duty assignments for teachers at lunch, those kinds of things. But if we need more space, then we are, you know, we have spaces available in the buildings. We just need to arrange that supervision. I think a lot of our schools are working on creative ways to maximize what they have in the cafeteria. I've heard some schools discuss being able to use kind of a rotation. So a student may be in the cafeteria some part of the week, but other parts of the week they're in a classroom. So that allows all students to be in the cafeteria at times and all students to be in classrooms at times. If we find we need more space, I do think the better option would be for us to say, okay, we need to spread back out into some of the classrooms over closing a school. Again, the CDC guidance speaks to that three feet, but throughout the document, it speaks to don't let three feet make you close a building.
Correct.
We, just like last week, the day after, we had a meeting with all principals because we asked principals to watch these meetings and listen and be able to ask for clarification from us. We're meeting tomorrow morning with all of our principals, and this will be a topic. You know, it seems like things have gotten a little worse even since last week, and we need to acknowledge that. And so for that reason, we'll be having a conversation with principals tomorrow and maybe getting a little bit more specific in comparison to what we originally had expected.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, on this specific topic.
Yeah, do we want to finish this topic?
Yeah, 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 on this specific topic. What about, I'm assuming, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that as far as when we would shut down a classroom or when we would shut down a building is probably something that the Health Department, the local Health Department, we would work with them to determine that. We're not going to put in any metrics or anything like that for something like that. Is that correct?
I would seek that guidance from the Health Department. Certainly, if the board directs me otherwise, we'll implement what the board directs. But at this time, as I speak with the Health Department and as we discuss case information, I do my best to try to make connections easy. If we see cases in a classroom, if we see cases in a school, when I communicate with the Health Department, I do my best to go ahead and make those connections very, very clear, try to save them from having to find that through contact tracing. And then I'll kind of step back and let them offer whatever guidance they care to share with me. Of course, when I get that information, I pass it on to the superintendent to be shared with the board.
How is our, so the issue of reporting cases and things like that, I think that was another kind of issue that was a little bit contentious in the community last year. I remember getting a lot, I got several parents, students who reached out to me saying, you know, I reported my case and it never got reported. And I think a lot of the times, it's because those things had to go through the Health Department. And I don't know what, there's a variety of reasons why something may or may not get reported. But, you know, it also seems that when things really start to blow up too, that even the Health Department starts to fall back behind a little bit in doing the contact tracing and things like that. Is there any, is there any opportunity or measure for us to, you know, have? And hopefully, I'm not going to upset any of our nursing staff here, but I think, I don't think I will. But, you know, is there any opportunity to kind of have them be part of this process as well? Both to, you know, pick up, both to help the process along and also to to boost confidence, if you will, among our communities about this kind of a thing? I mean, I think if you're hearing the same thing from the Health Department, from your school's nurse, from the administration on the dashboard, you tend, you know, and then from other people's parents even or whatever, you know, when things all point in the same direction, you know, tends to kind of help the messaging. And so I'm just looking for ways that we can avoid some of the problems maybe that we had last year. I'm just kind of wondering about that.
Sure, I remember the conversation last year when there were individuals saying they hadn't been contact traced or hadn't been contacted by anyone. I think at one of the meetings, we basically had taken everyone that we knew of that had reported a positive case associated with the school. And Nurse Hager and I followed up with those families and contacted all those families. And if I'm not mistaken, every family we spoke to said they had communicated with the Health Department. They did feel that they had been contact traced. I have no doubt that the Health Department gets very, very busy. My understanding, sometimes if there are very, very simple cases, then they might say, please let your family know. Please let your neighbor know who you hung out with. But anytime there's more extensive contact tracing needed, when I look or try to investigate it with the Health Department, it seems to be happening. To your question of school nurses, there certainly are school divisions who have taken on contact tracing, kind of all on their own. You know, I think that's risky business.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean for them to be doing contact tracing. I just meant for them to be part of the process so that they can also help answer questions, feed you data, get data, and mainly just because I think people trust their school nurse, right?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, 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 it's just clarification, no apologies. But just, you know, can we involve them in a way that helps everybody?
I'm pretty sure, I've spoken with a lot of nurses when I visited last year, and they were all very involved. They, you know, were talking with the families and, you know, they know whose friends are whose. And they were doing all that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason.
Hundred percent. I misunderstood the question. Our nurses are very involved, and many, many times, they know first. The parent calls the school and shares that information. It gets shared with Nurse Hager, gets shared with me, and we start our conversation with the Health Department. And again, those very easy connections that we can make for the Health Department, we don't mean to be presumptive, but we may say, hey, such and such a positive case you're working on, we know they play athletics. We know, you know, they do this, or they do that, or we try to make the easy connections. Like, if there's been multiple cases, we'll say, hey, three cases this week in this building, just kind of giving you the heads up. But yes, sir, they are extremely important to our process.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah, I understand they are extremely important. But I also receive emails and phone calls from some of our nurses who wanted to be more engaged in the process and felt like maybe their hands were tied in some areas. So that should never happen. The other thing I wanted to ask, last year for me, it was a big concern when exposure, you know, became the huge thing that folks were concerned about and there not being real clarification. So we have a document. How is that going to be shared with community so that they understand exactly what contact means? Other than just being available, how are we as a district going to help make that available?
This document?
Yes.
I will be happy to work with Ms. Drake to get it out through all available channels. I think that's a great point. I mentioned earlier, it's publicly available, but we also have some responsibility to inform. Yes, ma'am.
If I may, Mr. Garretson, if it's okay. I'm also, so Mr. Garretson represents us on the task force. I represent us on the task force communication group. And that's certainly a task that we've been challenged as a group of communicators throughout the community, especially with the rise in variant cases that we're seeing with the Delta variant, is communicating about that, communicating about contact tracing, communicating about new guidance. So we are trying to tackle that at the community level with the schools providing the support that we can.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Turn myself off. Does anybody else have anything on the health metrics discussion? Are we finished with that?
I have one question. I don't know if, again, I'm never sure what category these, it comes under.
Try it.
Sports, extracurricular activities, marching band, any? What are going to be our recommendations on those?
Yeah, Danny can speak to how we're handling those.
Currently, right now, the VHSL is planning regular seasons this year. We've already started practices. You may have seen in the paper, some schools, some schools around us, football teams have had to stop practicing for a while. They've had some COVID issues on their team. Allegheny was the first one. Radford, Carroll and Galax today announced that they had some COVID issues, and they were suspending practices right now. Knock on wood, so far, we haven't had that here with us. Our student athletes are masking when they're indoors, in the locker rooms and getting ready. If it's an outside sport, they are not masking. Volleyball is masking up until the point where they get into competing or stringent drills. If they're just standing around talking, they're pulling the mask on. If they are active, they're not wearing, they're pulling the mask off. Same thing for sideline cheer and competition cheer with them. And again, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues. I did see today where the VHSL is going to come out with some more guidance, I believe, tomorrow in regards to masking. So we'll see what they say.
You said tomorrow? Tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
What about marching band and theater?
Marching band, I believe, are doing very similar to what they did last year. If they're indoors, I think they're wearing the mask with the hole in, the bell caps, continuing to distance. Very similar to what they did last year.
Thank you.
So what about our drama and chorus? Those folks and our children and parents and how they are able to perform and hold performances?
Yes, they are. Danny was correct about band. Also, with indoor guidance to be in masks, our choirs, our theater classes are also in the masks. It does speak to three feet, if that's all you can get, but they'd like you to try to get more. And we've put that word out to our teachers as well. Performances, one of the greatest obstacles last year to being able to have performances were capacity limits in auditoriums, in spaces. We do not have that under current CDC guidelines. So we have a number of programs that are beginning their planning, beginning to put together their ideas, select their performances. And we've encouraged them to move forward. Till something changes or something's different, we want them to move forward and prepare to offer those opportunities to students.
Thank you.
Oh, great question. Awesome. All right, anything else on this topic?
Again, I'll tell you what I want to talk about, and you can tell me if we talk about it later. So a couple of things I want to talk about is, you know, what we do maybe after, I want to talk about metrics and what we do maybe after, if the CDC doesn't, no longer require, or if the governor no longer requires us to follow the CDC or something like that. And I also want to talk a little bit about vaccination. So that's all part of health? Is that now the time to talk about it?
I mean, I don't know what we can really talk about until we know what the guidelines.
You're right. Yeah, I think there's a balance between.
I think we have to wait.
Well, I think, I think all summer, we kind of waited for the state, right? And then we kind of found ourselves in a position where we were kind of doing everything last minute without enough time. But at the same time, you don't want to, you know, I certainly want to put our staff into a position where they're having to craft a bunch of plans and things that just get upended because of something.
Or just have a discussion without knowing any end result.
Sure, but I think, I think, I guess I would just encourage the board to think about, you know, if we get through a surge and things kind of come back down to a place where they were for a while, you know, after the fall surge last year, you know, where they, you know, they didn't get back down to summer levels, but they kind of simmered at a higher level that was just, you know, a little bit too high for some people and just fine for other people and things like that. I think, I do still think that we might be faced with a situation that we may want to, you know, have at least some discussions ahead of time, maybe as a board, maybe amongst ourselves, to kind of know what direction we're going to go in so that we can move quickly.
Yeah, I think the big challenge really is, you know, when will the CDC relax their guidelines? And the downside to having a law that's in Virginia that says that we have to follow the CDC guidelines is that we're in a location that has done a very good job of keeping the spread to a minimum. You know, unlike like the Eastern Shore or Northern Virginia where it's more populated. So it's, I think, a little frustrating that it's a one-size-fits-all. And I can see it in some instances, but I also would like for the local to have a little more say. But that's out of our control, you know?
I mean, absolutely, and I think it was, you know, I think the conversation that we started last year, or last week with Dr. Bissell, I think was a good one. I think, you know, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. And I just, I find those things easier to talk about and make decisions about before you're thrown into the fire, so to speak. So I don't know that there's any action that we have to take on this, but, you know, I have been doing some thinking about it. I have, you know, I did reach out to Dr. Bissell and I had a long conversation with her and Jason about, you know, at what level of community spread, you know, when we were just, when we were really just concerned with masking. You know, and it was, it was an informative discussion. And I think that based on that, I mean, I think we can get someplace that would probably work well. And we may need to quickly because at some point, if the CDC drops their requirement, you know, then it drops for us automatically.
And, sorry to interrupt, Dr. Bissell's going to know that faster than us. So I think it would be wise if we maybe said, and again, this is the will of the board, Dr. Bissell, if you could engage us as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what I'm asking for.
Even if we have to have an extra meeting to discuss this and weigh things out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm saying. I guess in my mind, I think that some of those conversations can happen before we're in emergency mode. And I think that it's important, and I mean, I've thought about some of the disconnect that we've had, that we had last year on some of this stuff. And I think, I think I come back to that whole, you know, kind of overarching guidance that we all operate under, which is, you know, that we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to do right by all kids, right? And we bend, I said this earlier tonight, we bend over backwards, you know, for the smaller groups, for the least of these type of thing, right? You know, the spec ed kids, the minority kids, the transgender kids, you know, socioeconomically disadvantaged kids. I mean, we do that. And, you know, for me, it was a little heartbreaking to hear, you know, that email that we got from that, that one little, that one little girl, there's a little girl that sent us an email from, had just moved here from California, was eager to, she was in elementary school, was eager to make friends, and, you know, was having a Zoom talk with her doctor who was back in California, basically saying, can I go to school? It's been a year, she's, you know, in a new place, can't make friends, she wants to go to school. He said, as long as everybody's wearing masks, you can go to school. So it's like, I think that the Health Department sometimes looks at things at a very broad and large view for public health. And they're not wrong. They just sometime, you know, we're kind of more in the business of maybe wanting to be a little bit more cautious for kids like this, you know, this little girl, you know? So that's why I hesitate when I say, you know, I don't want to be put in a position where Dr. Bissell has to come to us and say, here's what you have to do, right? I want to have those conversations maybe a little bit ahead of time so we can say, okay, if your comfort, if the Health Department's comfort level is here, we understand that, maybe we want to be just a little bit to one side of it or the other. And we kind of, you know, we have some direction before we go in.
Well, if it's the will of the board, we could certainly ask Dr. Bissell if she could provide us an updated each meeting? Or once a month, or just throwing out ideas?
One thing I would like to find out, let's say that Health Department said, you're good to go. You know, the peak passed, we're down, numbers are so low, but CDC is still saying what they're saying.
Yes.
I think then there is a legal issue over there. And then the CDC also says, you can verify with your legal counsel or check with your insurance. Make sure that you're insured to not to listen to them, you know? Let's say we're doing our own thing because our numbers are basically so low. So I think I mentioned that to Dr. Meyer before too. I think we have to make sure we know the answer to those two. You know, if CDC not changing anything, but our local Health Department says, we are in control here, our numbers are very low, then what we going to do or what we really legally can do? So I think that's a one criteria for me to.
Or the flip side.
Have the answer, or, or the other way around.
The CDC says everything's great, right? And, and we have, heaven forbid, we, things are turned south here, then, you know? So I, I guess my, I just bring that up to the board because we're talking, you know, the original plan was that we were going to have discussions on September 7th about what to do next. And, and I don't, I just, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I'd like to not get to September 7th and sit around and go like, all right, and like, you know, have we thought about this? I mean, I, I guess I'm just encouraging people to, you know,
Keep talking.
To, to talk to each other, talk, you know? And, and, and maybe from the staff point of view, you know, maybe there could be, I, I mean, I think the, the VDH metric is one that I think is, is, you know, the advantage of that one is that it's readily available. Everybody can wrap their heads around it. It's, comes from the state VDH, right? The disadvantage, of course, is it lacks context. It's, it's kind of a very brute force kind of a thing. So somewhere between that metric and maybe the EpiCurves or something like that, maybe we could find something. And, and, and I'm happy to, you know, keep that discussion going and inform the board about what, you know, what, you know, I'm finding out. Because it's, so, I, I don't know.
Okay, so for me, it's, it's pretty clear. We can talk till we are falling out of our chairs. But if this law says we follow the CDC guidelines and until they change, it doesn't matter what our numbers look like because we have to follow those guidelines.
If the board would like, a couple of things is I am getting Tommy to check with VACOR, our insurance provider as to coverage and what that looks like to make sure we're covered and when and that type of things. That's a bit of information that I'll be getting to the board. Something else too is I know Dr. Bissell has worked with Region 7 superintendents. Of course, Region 7 is southwest of us, they're, they're more small, they're smaller school divisions and they really heavily rely on, on, on Dr. Bissell and the VDH. And, and they have come up with a consistent metric for classrooms, I believe. From my understanding, I haven't seen it, but what I could do, if, if you all would like, is just send it to you now. Just take a look and see what they're using as a metric for classrooms.
Yeah, I'd love to see, I'd love to see that.
And so just to, just to show you, you know, what you do with it is up to you. I can also share with you what Mr. Tribaka has talked about in terms of the VDH. Just make sure, in case you're not familiar with the, the different levels, and I'll share that document with you too, so you can see the VDH recommendations as well. So if it's okay with the board, I'll send that to you.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, any other topics on the health metrics?
So even with all that information, until the CDC says you can do this?
Correct.
Yeah.
There's no argument there.
Okay.
But by the way, if the CDC, if we're in a situation where the CDC basically drops or changes their, you know, say mask mandate or something like that, do we automatically follow or do we have to actually vote on it?
No, the board has given permission for administration, I'm sorry.
Has the board given permission?
Yes. We did.
I haven't heard that, I'm sorry.
We did, back in June.
Back last year.
Back in last year.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Well, it was in June.
Yeah.
We said, in June, we said, um, because at that time, we had no idea what the CDC and VDH were going to come out with. And we said in June for, to give you permission to follow what they come up with.
I prefer at this point, since you're so later in the game, that, that, that the board.
Okay.
So, so we will not change things until we need as a board and make that change.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, okay, that's the point, right?
Yes.
That we will not, I will not change things until the board directs me to change things.
Got it.
Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is that I think the motion that I made earlier on the vote that we took was to follow the CDC guidance, right?
But if CDC guys changes, I'm still going to ask you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if we have to have an extra meeting.
Yeah, publicly to, to.
Yeah, I mean, for me, that was a shorthand for, we're going to follow what they're saying that we should do right now.
Right, okay.
Okay. Got it.
And then I guess the other question related to health i- is vaccination. And that's something that I think Dr. Bissell has talked to us about and, and, you know, is there, you know, the, we're, we're kind of in this situation because of, of low vaccination numbers across our country. And, you know, are there steps that, that we can take, you know, to encourage vaccination? I probably would not support a mandate at this point as, as we are under emergency use for the vaccine. But, you know, certainly there might be some things that we can do to, to educate. I mean, we have students that are, you know, 12 and, you know, half our students roughly are eligible for the vaccine. So we could certainly do things there, we could work with the health department in that arena as well. And is, is that something that we're, that we're talking about with the health department?
Mr. Garrison, I think we're already doing that, right? We certainly did at the end of last year.
We have been, we, we made the clinics available. We actually have the, the health department vaccination bus at Christiansburg High School tomorrow from nine to three for any required school vaccinations that are, that are parents trying to get complete right before school starts. They will also have the COVID vaccine available for anyone who wanted it. No appointment necessary, walk in and if you're under 18, you must have a parent present. Yes, sir.
Hey, any further questions on this topic?
So a, a question about the, having a parent present. So if we have parents who are working and they can't be present during daytime hours, how do we make it more convenient if this is something that they want to do?
The COVID vaccine specifically?
Yes.
I, I'm comfortable saying any parent that wanted to contact me directly, I can work with them to make arrangements with the health department to, to work around almost any schedule. I mean, the health department has been consistently more than willing to provide the vaccine to anyone who's available. Oftentimes, to, to borrow Mr. Tribaka's phrase, bending over backwards to, to make it available to families. If they'll just call or email me, I'm happy to do it if that's their desire.
I know they did even home, home visits, I think, for it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so again, how do we put that information out there so our, uh, community, our school community understand that that's something that's available and not have barriers that they may perceive?
I'll work with Ms. Drake and I can also work with Ms. Woodsetzer through Equity to, to make sure we're using every available channel. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. All right, did we cover it all? Okay, everybody get?
What about the academic side? Is that, is that a separate, is that, would that be new business or?
It'd still be under health metrics.
So that, that's come up, I guess we've had, there's been some conversation, parents have asked about, what are we going to do if a student is out for a prolonged period for quarantining? And I know that Ms. Whitaker sent us an, an email with information regarding that. I guess, is that something we need to talk about or is that, is it too soon to have that conversation? I'm like, I don't know.
I think we need to talk about it tonight.
No, it's not too soon.
Yeah, I mean, teachers, because it sounded like from her, from the correspondence that she sent to us, that we aren't really set up like we were last year from a technology standpoint for teachers to really just automatically say, okay, I'm going to record my class. And we haven't asked them to prepare their class to be recorded, which, because that does require you to sort of, you know, work with your lesson plan to make it something that would work for a recording. So I'm just wondering how, what, and then the other question that came up with that, which was, I thought it was an interesting one, was, you know, if you provided, do we have, would a student be required to actually watch it? And I, though I, I kind of questioned that one, I was like, why wouldn't you? But I guess for some parents, they, they don't have that option. They're not, they're not the option of being home to, to be with their, to, or to just make sure that they do it also if they don't have access to the internet, then obviously that's a problem. So I'm just not sure where, where we're headed with that and I think that's something we need to come up with.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we had a very lengthy conversation this morning with our leadership team in regards to this, about the pros and cons of, of offering this. And, you know, I will defer to, to Ms. Whitaker, Mr. Pauli, Dr. Wickham, to sort of give their thoughts as to where we are. Because we have not, at, to this point, asked teachers to do any type of hybrid instruction in person. Students will still have access to Google assignments, but will not receive direct instruction from any type of technology like Google Meet last year.
Right, right.
Because that was one of the biggest hardships for teachers last year, was that, that, you know, dual delivery type of, of system. And, 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 you know, they brought up several points this morning, you know, where do we stop? I mean, is it, you know, is it, for kids who are quarantined? But then, of course, you have kids out for other reasons too. And, I mean, they're, and, and, you know, on the surface, it seems like, oh, that should be pretty easy because of what we did last year. And there are a lot of, a lot of challenges. And so who would like to step up and talk about some of those challenges first?
And it's a big equity issue too, if you know.
Yes, and, and Galen reminded us of that this morning too. She's doing her job, absolutely.
Not exactly sure what else to add to that except the idea that last year, teachers were prepared to deliver hybrid instruction and they knew that they would have the camera on them during the direct instruction phase and even invite students who were at home to then disconnect and perhaps come back. But understanding that expectation, teachers carefully planned their strategies to reach both at-home and in-person students. We've been clear to them this year that we're not expecting them to do hybrid instruction. So it stands to reason that they are going back to strategies that are best designed for in-person students. Now, that's not to say they haven't learned some new strategies last year. We learned lots of things last year that we're going to continue to do that, that, that were good things. But there, I, I would fear at the secondary level, a, a middle school student watching seven 45-minute recordings starting at three o'clock or a high school student watching four 90-minute blocks starting at three o'clock every day really isn't going to provide them with good instruction. I would like to just encourage our teachers through their principals to do what we've always done, which is to meet students' needs depending on their length of absence. You know, as a former science teacher, I had students doing makeup labs when they would come back from being ill. I would do study sessions during lunch, I would do extra help after school, I would call home. Nowadays, I guess I might Zoom or Google Meet with the student. But I would trust our teachers to take care of students with brief as well as extended absences. Dr. Wickham?
I agree with everything that Mr. Pauli just said, absolutely. And at the elementary level, the exact same issues because we do not have our teachers hybrid this year. We don't have Google Meet, whereas last year it was easy enough for a teacher to record. This year, we just, we have one virtual class per grade level, so one kindergarten virtual class. Other teachers just are not set up to do this. And like Mr. Pauli said, just the idea of a little one sitting there at, you know, at the end of the day at four o'clock and receiving a recording of four and a, four and a half hours of content, I don't know that that would be age appropriate at all.
Okay.
I, so I'm going to, I guess maybe I'll push back a little bit on this. I, I trust what you guys are saying and I believe you, I just think that there's a breaking point to this at some point, right? In, in the past, pre-COVID, I mean, I guess kids, you know, obviously kids were maybe out with, you know, the flu or they were out with some other illness or operation or whatever for a long, I mean, these things happened, but I'm assuming that they were relatively rare. And I think what we're, you know, I think the assumption for this year, after we saw our numbers go down drastically on COVID and after a large percentage of the population started getting vaccinated, the assumption was, well, that's not going to happen again. But I think always in the back of our minds, and, and I remember even saying, you know, we've learned these skills, we might need them again, hopefully we keep them sharp, hopefully we keep doing some of this stuff so that if we needed to fall back on them, heaven forbid, that, that we, you know, that we've got them there. So I think that, you know, when you get to a point where you have, when you get to a point where maybe there's an outbreak in a class, you know, certainly an elementary class, you know, maybe you would, maybe that class would just go remote and maybe that's one way to handle that because it's easy to do at the elementary level. But on, at what point do you get to that point? And, and is there a point in between where giving that kind of one-on-one attention, Mr. Pauli, that you were giving, you know, where you could do that here and there, but now you may have to do it to three, four, five kids at a time, you know, at different, you know, places? I mean, at, at some point, teachers may prefer to do, you know, some teachers may even prefer maybe to do hybrid or to do, to record their, their, their lecture, their lessons, I guess.
So just off the cuff, based on what you said, my, my response would be trying to transport myself back 25 years ago, but with current technology, if I had that situation, I might prefer during my planning period to do a 10-minute recording of myself explaining the essential concepts and sending it out to four or five kids. That would actually save me time from having to do it after school five times potentially. So it's very similar to, similar to like the flipped classroom. There are plenty of teachers who do flipped classroom, which is they already do five, 10, 20 minutes of themselves doing direct instruction and that's the homework for the night to watch that. And when they come in, they actually do the practice and reinforcement. So there are some teachers out there already accustomed to doing that. That would certainly be my preference than to have a student just really watch other kids doing activities for 90 minutes with varying lengths of direct instruction embedded in there.
Okay, so that, I, I don't, I'm not interested in mandating that all teachers have to do this, this or this. And I don't know that we have to transport back 25, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that teachers will, yeah, I'd like to hear from some teachers about, about what they're thinking on this. I mean, it's, it's an ever-changing situation, maybe we'll never get there and hopefully we won't. But I, I do think we have to kind of be on our toes right now and think ahead. But, you know, at, at the high school level, for example, you know, if you're in AP Calculus, you know, what do you, you know, having an assignment in Google Classroom might not be enough. You might need, you know, something there. And, you know, in that case, I mean, maybe the teacher recording one of, you know, if they teach three sections of it or two sections of it, they record one of them for that day if they, you know, have students that are absent or something. I, I don't know, I'm not saying, again, I'm not saying we should mandate it, but I, I do wonder if we shouldn't encourage teachers to think about how they're going to deliver lessons to, to kids who have to quarantine or have to be absent.
That was actually part of our conversation this morning, that going back to the point about how much was learned last year, we'd really like to have the opportunity to hear from our teachers to, they probably will have lots of ideas about how we can provide makeup work in a different way than how we've done it in the past. But we'd really like to have the opportunity to hear their ideas and the things that they've learned. I know, for example, at some schools last year, you know, with parent-teacher conferences, when we were able to bring parents back in, we invited parents in, but there were some parents who couldn't come in and the Zoom worked better for them. So because of that, we've changed our parent-teacher conferences. So certainly there are a lot of things that we learned and again, we'd like to be able to hear from our teachers. And also to your point as well, you know, just like last year, we've asked our teachers at the elementary level, even with our kindergarten children, you know, within the first 30 days of school, even before then, we still want our littles to be able to learn how to get on their Chromebooks, use their Chromebooks and be ready to take those home. So we've pushed that down to kindergarten, we, we are preparing for the unknown.
You know, something else too, that, that the, of course, the board has directed me, and I'm working with our team to do this as a, as a post-event analysis of what happened last year. And so this is all part of that, you know, and, and understanding what we learned and, and how we'll continue to move forward, what we'll continue to do maybe because of what happened last year and what we may not do. And, and so that's, this is sort of part of that. So we're, we're interested to learn from teachers. You know, what I found out is that we trust teachers and they, they, they get it done. They'll know what to do and it's going to be different from classroom to classroom. It gets, it's hard to just sort of put, put it all and put them all in one box. It's, it's different across the board and, and I trust our teachers to do what's needed to, to make sure the kids learn.
If I could, like, oh, I'm sorry, who's talking?
Well, I was just going to say, Mark, I think as a former teacher, I think you have to, you submitted one remark that I was, I kind of taken aback at that, you know, we all know doing remotes easy. Remote's not easy. I'm not quite sure why you think remotes easy, but remote isn't easy.
If I said that, I did not mean that.
I think that a lot of teachers already know how to handle this, they've done it, they did it all last year. As, as Dr. Wickham and, and Mr. Pauli said, they, they've already gotten the experience at, at this. And I think we, you need to kind of look to them to figure out what works best for them. A lot of them already do those kind of recordings or that are just, you know, just the, the basic instructional part of the day. To sit and listen to an entire class, it's, it's really not useful because half of it's time where students are just working and, and I, I just don't think that would be. students are just working. And, and I, I just don't think that would be something we would want to, to ask teachers to do. But I think if we're looking to the teachers, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so we also need to talk about the parents and how ready they would be to be able to get things set back up and adjust the whole family and their days or whatever to be able to help support the children. So we can't leave the parents out and how they're going to be able to flip a switch and turn back on also.
Yes, ma'am. And if I could make one other point, there, there is a, a breakpoint. I'm not, I'm, I'm not as well-versed as I used to be on exactly what it is. But when an absence is of a certain length, we do provide homebound services with physicians' requests as well. I forget what the breakpoint is for that. Maybe Jason knows. Based on Dr. recommendation.
All right. Any other further questions? Okay. Dr. Meyer, I think you're going to talk about the first day of school?
Sure, we have this big thing coming up on Thursday. Pretty important, and a lot of folks are excited about it. And, and I've been to, well, I went to my own students' open house today and saw a lot of smiling teachers teach and smiling students and teachers helping students and parents find their ways around and, and getting them acclimated. So, yeah, we start school on Thursday. Just some information, we, we have about two hundred and eighty students enrolled in our virtual school. And, you know, this is something that we, we had promised to continue next year regardless, last year regardless of what happens this year, and continue to make it something that we continue to do. And as we're looking towards budgets moving forward too, we're meeting the needs of our students and students in these counties. But we're also budgetarily, that equates for about one point seven million dollars in funding that because we've offered this solution to, to our families. We have ninety-six, nine thousand six hundred and eighty-three students enrolled for in-person. Of course, we'll be looking at the numbers, which seems to be up if you count those two together. So Mr. Krantz is smiling under that mask over there. Seems like we have, we're having more kids enroll this year than, than last year. So we'll, we hope that trend continues, and we'll get back to you on that. In terms of hiring, we have four teacher vacancies, which is not uncommon. But all classrooms are covered. In fact, I believe it will be three after today maybe because there were some interviews happening today. But we do have long-term subs in place if needed. We do have several aid positions that are open. And if you know anyone who wants to be an aide, you know, please encourage them to apply. Remember, they're now part of the aging retirement system with us, as the board added that benefit last year. And so, so yeah, we've had open, many open houses happened this evening. We had a successful new teacher orientation last week. We had an administrative retreat last week for a couple of days too. Teachers have been participating in professional development the last few days, and I've, I've, they've had a lot of teachers in and out of our building. It's good to see them. The, we had an all-county opening. We didn't do the, bring everybody together and do the county opening. We did a, a video that Ms. Wood and Ms. Drake put together for us and, and several other participants. I appreciate everyone who participated to highlight our strategic plan, which was, which is, you know, our focus, obviously. So if you haven't seen that, I encourage you to see that. And I had the opportunity to, to go to each strand, and we did a GoPro camera, and we had a couple of principals in my car, and we rode around their strand, and, and had some questions. And I believe, yeah, Fraggis is back there. She was one of our participants and, and to share the, the excitement that our, our principals have for the school year. So, 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 yeah, we're, we're, we're ready to go. We're excited to get the kids, kids in on Thursday morning. And just remind folks, buses run slower the first day. Expect buses to be late in, in terms of pickup and drop-off. So, so give our, our bus drivers a little bit of grace on, on that first day because they, they, they do a great job, but the first pickups, the first day are, can be a little, little tough in getting, getting students to buses and on and getting them out. And, and then what happens is elementary, actually, the biggest issue, elementary is usually really late the first day because secondary runs first. Secondary, even the secondary kids have a hard time finding their bus at times, as we know, if you've been a secondary principal. And getting them out of there is usually slow, which then holds up the second routes of elementary. So, so please just be patient with us. But we do have a new app that you can put on your phone to follow your child's bus. You'll know exactly where your child's bus is. If you need to get that app, please call our transportation department, and you will be able to see your bus the first day of school and where it is and, and when it may or may not arrive. So that's about it. Any questions from anyone?
Thank you.
For rest of us that are driving, when you see a bus that stops with the red light flashing, you have to stop. And that was a nice video, by the way.
It was a great video. All right. Unfinished business. Currently, there are no matters of unfinished business, but I did want to address Jamie. You had mentioned bringing something to the board for the ACE program. So we are putting that in the works. It will either come at the, I believe, this October, first October meeting. So we're working on putting that together. We're glad you brought it up.
I will say that Dana and I and Sherry Blevins did the ACE for walk, the walk for ACE or run for ACE. We walked.
Right.
We got our shirts.
I did too.
Our daughters went. So we did get that done. So I, I tried to.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome.
Efforts where I was talking.
There you go. Are there any matters of new business? Okay. Any announcements? Jamie just made one. And I just want to remind the board that the VSB A annual conference registration is open. The dates are November seventeenth through the nineteenth. So if you just let Brenda know if you would like to attend. Anybody have any other announcements?
The efforts of the school system and hearing from some of our students in the ACE program and make your, get registered twenty-eighth of August. We have close to two hundred folks already.
Great, thank you. Under agenda preparation, I want to make, make a note and see how the board would like to proceed. November second is Election Day and is currently a meeting day for us. Do we want to move this meeting to either Wednesday, the third, or Tuesday, November ninth? Because we have several school board seats that are up for election, two candidates currently on the board, and it would, moving the meeting would allow folks to actively participate in Election Day.
So I think if we're going to do this, then we need to say we're going to do this and be consistent because we've gone back and forth with it.
Okay.
So.
So.
You mean when, when we?
You mean when we create the calendar to begin with, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. We'll make a note to have that when we approve the calendar for next year? I mean, going forward, two things.
I haven't heard guidance.
Two things. One, when we make the calendar for next year, maybe we should permanently go ahead and take Election Day and move it. That's what the board is kind of saying.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear a desire to move. I'm sorry. I missed that.
I'm sorry. That's what some on the board are saying.
Okay.
So we, we have two pieces to this, the future and now.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to make a suggestion, motion, whatever.
So I, I would move that we move the meeting to Wednesday, the third, if that's okay with everyone. And, and I'll suggest that we just, yeah, make a policy to just move to the next day after Election Day if it, in the future.
So I'm not sure about just moving it to the third. We have other Tuesdays, and that's kind of the norm, things on Tuesdays as far as meetings. So.
Again, it's the will of the board. If somebody wants to make a motion, we can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second Mark's mo.
Thank you, Ms. Cass.
And I can, and I can amend my motion to, if, if people would prefer to do it just the, the next available Tuesday. So in this case, in two, twenty twenty-one, it would be on the ninth. So we would have a meeting on the ninth. And again, on the sixteenth, I think, unless we wanted to do the ninth and the twenty-third.
No, that's, that's Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that's Thanksgiving.
I'm, I'm okay with the ninth and sixteen. I mean, having the meetings on Tuesdays.
I was going to say, keep in mind, we also, if the SBA has their.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that.
Which, for me, I mean, just speaking for myself this year, there's been plenty of elections that we've had our meeting that night. The polls close at seven. So, you know, our meetings don't start till seven. So speaking for myself, I'm fine with having the meeting that night. I can't speak for my colleagues that are up for election as well or for the future ones. But I don't remember not ever having a meeting on Election Night.
Yeah, we did move it a couple of times. So I'm just saying.
It's a case on my elections.
If we need to, if we need to do it, then we need to make, be consistent with what we're doing.
I would just like to say that I have never liked us having a meeting on Election Night, just because I feel that it hasn't been fair to all of our board members, not only the ones that haven't been up in the past or the present. It's considered a holiday now by our federal government. And I think it would be feasible, since we are still using the schools for the election, that we, I'm, I'm fine with either moving it to the next day or moving it to the following Tuesday. I know we do have a lot, lot going on in November with the Thanksgiving break, our conference, and we have to get those meetings in. But whatever the will of the board would be, I'm willing to meet on any other day. But I do feel like it would be a good move to move the meeting from that particular night.
That, that's a good point.
I can support that. I can support that.
Okay, so where are we at with what date? Currently, we have on the table, the motion is for November third. But Mr. Trabaka said that he would be willing to switch that if it pleased the majority of the board.
I would say the ninth then.
I, I go either way.
I'm either way.
Okay, so.
I'm either way.
So I'll, I'll amend. Can I amend my motion, Mr. Drake? I'll amend my motion to move that we move the meeting from the second to the ninth this year.
Second.
Ms. Cass, do you accept that amendment? Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on it? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And when we go to look at the calendar next year, we will make sure that we look at that.
The motion included a direction for the board clerk to reflect this change for future meetings held on Election Day.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Got it. Great. Nice job. All right. Board members, the only item left, other than further public address, is our closed session agenda item and is the personnel report. Dr. Meyer, do you have anything to discuss with the board regarding the personnel report? Or does anyone wish to go into closed session to discuss the personnel report?
Uh, no, there's nothing on there that, that I need to discuss with you unless you have something.
Board, everybody good?
We're good.
Okay. So I will move to the motion for the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we will continue with public address. So Ms. Woods, if you could get me where I'm at?
We are at Alicia Vault.
Alicia Vault?
Yeah.
All right. Barbara Step. And then the next person would be Joanne Price. Thank you for your patience. Go ahead. State your name and location and.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Step, mother, grandmother educator from Christiansburg. When are you most prone to let fear stifle your love and concern for others? Our children are the most precious gift God has given us. We need to generously offer them the education they need under the best possible circumstances. Gender is a societal construction that deals with expected behavior roles and activities typically associated with the different sexes. Gender roles vary across cultures and influence how people act and feel about themselves. What percentage of trans Montgomery County Public School students are transgender? Has a survey been done? If it's fifteen percent, you have eighty-five percent who are non and identify with the gender they were assigned at birth. So do you punish and put threatening circumstances to eighty-five percent of our children? Please consider the private restrooms for those who will seek to abuse the policy for permitting anyone to use a restroom because they can. Open restrooms will create situations that can cause harm and create circumstances and experiences no child should have to endure. Do not let political correctness take precedence over actual correctness. Think of the majority of our children who need to know you care about them. Think of the downfalls you were doing to our children from a developmental, emotional, academic, and medical perspective if you passed the Trinity Endure Policy. Seek to protect and consider individual rights and every family's freedom to choose what is best for their own children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak since you've already voted, but I do express the thoughts that as an educator, I'm certainly glad I'm retired. I still substitute in the school system. This whole process that's been done to our children, I just feel we're going to suffer for a lot of years for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Joanne Price and then Jeff Mitchell. Neither? Sorry, it's hard for me to see out in the audience with these lights. Vincent Corbassario? No? Crystal Lawson? No? Angela Lambert? No? Angela Akers? No? Elliot McAllister? No? Beverly Henley? No? Kevin Lucas? Stephanie Kirchner? Roberta Barbady?
Robert.
Robert.
Robert, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not here to criticize. I sat through the board meeting last week from start to finish, and I began to understand how difficult this process is for everyone. I don't know the answers, but there were some thoughts and some information that I'd like to briefly share. I bring no particular position on my part, and certainly no vague threats. Part of the difficulty you had with the mask discussion, if I can characterize it as that, last week was partial and somewhat inaccurate information. We never have complete information in any decision. But I did want to share some information that the CDC has put out that I did not hear discussed. Recently, recent weeks, the CDC has sent a letter to all laboratories in the country that by the end of the year, they must select another test, not the PCR test, to identify the SARS-CoV-2 virus. Because it doesn't differentiate between that virus and influenza. And in fact, even the creator of the PCR test and other sources have stated quite clearly, it doesn't differentiate consistently between other viruses and even some bacteria, some of which cause pneumonia. Yes, I am a health professional, so I know a little bit about that. Don't claim to be an expert. It seems to me there are some questions perhaps Dr. Bissell could answer in that realm. Subsequent to that meeting, a Freedom of Information request response by the CDC was published. And I've read it over in detail, trying to understand it. And I admit that bureaucraties makes it difficult to be perfectly clear. But it seems to state quite clearly that the CDC does not have an isolate, i.e. they have not isolated the SARS-CoV-2 virus. I don't understand how that can be. I don't have any answer. But perhaps another question. If you can't, don't have it isolated. don't have it isolated, and you don't have a test that's accurate for it, then the obvious question is, how do we? What is the Delta variant? How do you differentiate? How are we testing for it? I'm sure there are answers out there, but so far, I've not been able to find them. But because you're making decisions that affect many people, seems to me this is part of the discussion that perhaps needs to go on.
Thank you, your time is up.
All right, thank you very much.
And last on the list is Kevin Meadows.
Good evening, board. Um, before I say anything else, I do want to give special kudos to, uh, some of you who do very well at paying attention to those that are sitting down here, no matter what viewpoint they have. Mrs. Franklin and Mrs. Bond, it just stands out. So thank you very much for that. I do want to go on record as opposing the transgender policies that have been adopted tonight. This is, of course, this, this area of contention is probably not going to go away. This is something that's, that's going to be around for a while, and because we are all here because of education, I hope that, that we all claim to be open-minded and are constantly growing. And so with that, we know that the, the psychological and sociological impacts of transgenderism are still extremely unclear. It is not defined, it is not determined. At, at best, it is unclear. I, I do want to offer you to, as you think about your personal opinions on these matters going forward and as this comes up again as a board, to consider, uh, and, uh, maybe research the role of Dr. John Money that he has in particularly with intersexuality and transgenderism. John Money was a, a psychologist who came to fame kind of in the fifties. He was from New Zealand. He came over here to the States. Eventually, he became a, a very well-known psychologist at, uh, Johns Hopkins. It was he who actually coined the term gender identity that we've used many, many times tonight. And he, he's actually, he actually coined several other terms that are, are used quite a bit. His main contribution to the issues of intersexuality and transgenderism were, was that he believed that it was nurture over nature that defined, uh, a person's sexual gender identity as he, as he coined it. He became very well-known for a particular case with, uh, a, a child who had had an incident as an infant, the Reamer case. And in this Reamer case, he actually went around the world and got worldwide fame for this successful case that he presented. Meanwhile, everything that he presented was actually a lie. He was treating this, this child and his, uh, his twin, uh, brother and having therapy sessions with them. And turns out that the child was not well-adjusted, like he was presenting, um, across the world. And, uh, actually, this child, the, the twin brother died of drug overdose. And the, the child, Bruce Reamer, who went by David, actually died, uh, blowing his brains out at the age of thirty-eight. This, the reason I say this is because so much transgenderism thought is actually built on the foundation of John's.
Thank you, your time is up.
So I'll leave you to research that. Thank you.
Okay, that, um, closes public address. Um, that was our last person on the list. And I adjourned this meeting at ten thirty-eight, nine, sorry, ten thirty-nine. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.